To the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to acknowledge the impermissible. Ms. Manning, can you call a roll?
Sure. Counselor Andronico.
Present.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Debona. Counselor Harris.
Present, I'm sorry, present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Phelan. Chairman McCarthy.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Tonight, we have a couple of very important items on the agenda. I want to turn it over to Chief of Staff, Mr. Walker, to do some introductions and lead off with the first appropriation 2021-038. So, Mr. Walker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. On behalf of the mayor, we certainly appreciate the constructive dialogue that has taken place, both the questions that we received at the meeting itself and in subsequent conversations with members of the committee relative to the pension obligation bond. One of the things that came up subsequently at the meeting and through some subsequent conversations is this question, however, just how exactly is this money going to be invested? Certainly a fair question. The mayor gave it a lot of thought. While those sorts of decisions typically made through a process after the appropriation authorization in a case like this, the mayor determined that in a good faith effort to address the concerns raised by counselors, that we would make the investment determination as part of this process. To that end, you were receipt of a memo from the mayor outlining his decision to ask the Quincy Retirement Board to invest the full amount of the pension obligation bond with the Massachusetts Pension Reserve Investment Management Board, and specifically the PRIM's Pension Reserve Investment Trust. The retirement board, while it is an independent agency, is well aware, understands the rationale that an investment of this kind, the city and the mayor would have a direct role in how it's invested in the strategy thereon, too. Just very quickly on the PRIT, the PRIT, quite simply, is one of the best performing public pension funds in the entire country. It has more than $90 billion in assets, including from the Massachusetts Teachers Association, the state employees retirement system, and the Boston Teachers Union, to name a few, in addition to a number of independent municipal retirement systems across the state. The PRIT fund has consistently outperformed benchmarks for more than 30 years. Last year, it gained more than 12%, and that, in real dollars, was more than $10 billion. With the team tonight, in addition to Mr. Mason and Mr. Kasha, we have Francesco Danielle, who we've been working with quite a bit over the last several months. He's the PRIM's Client Services Director, and he's going to talk in more detail and answer any questions you have about this investment strategy. A strategy that, again, in the end, is a good faith effort to address the concerns of this body, while at the same time providing securest possible investment environment for us to fully fund this pension obligation. Before I hand it over to Francesco, I just want to repeat a couple of quick points on the proposal overall. One, it saves money. Two, it is not new money. This is money we already owe today. This is money we pay every single year, and it's only going up. It goes up less as part of this plan. The risk inherent, and there are risks, as I mentioned during the last meeting, the inherent risk is largely the same that we face today, but without the same kind of benefits. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to hand it over to Francesco Danielle from the PRIM.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the time. How's my audio? Everyone can hear me fine?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your attention this evening. I'm going to try to be brief, but it's a very important matter we're going to be covering. And as Chris mentioned, I'm going to actually take a step back and tell you a little bit about our core philosophies, a little bit about the organization, PRIM's performance, and then kind of what we feel is happening in markets and what we're paying attention to. We should give you a little bit of flavor how PRIM supports itself. I'm going to share my screen now and bring up a presentation deck. I hope everyone can see that. Let me just put it on full view. There we go. Great. Well, let me tell you a little bit about myself before I get started. So my name is Francesco Danielle. I'm the Director of Client Services at PRIM. I kicked off my career in international equities and core fixed income for an asset manager in Boston called Independence Investment Associates. Subsequent to that, I continued my career often. I helped global financial institutions actively manage their loan portfolios with a Boston-based company called The Debt Exchange. And then at PRIM, it's been my privilege to represent the investment team in the entire organization across the Commonwealth. So some quick facts about PRIM. We're actually over $90 billion. I checked this late, early this evening. We're at $93 billion in assets under management. We take this responsibility of managing this pool of assets very seriously. We leave no stone unturned. We have about 50 public markets portfolios, 16 real estate timber portfolios, 100 private equity managers, and 32 portfolio completion strategy managers. So essentially, you should think of us as a very well-diversified portfolio. And our goal, we're engineered, is to do well both in up markets, like current markets, as well as in volatile markets, as we've seen since last March. We have a truly dedicated staff. We have a board and committee structure. We have 50 professionals on the team, two PhDs, 11 CFAs. I won't go through the list there, but you can see, we know, we try to say that we do not outsource our thinking. So we in-source a lot of our thinking. We believe in our decision-making process. We feel that one of the most important parts of our task is our asset allocation. So which asset classes to be in? And as you can see here on the right hand of the slide, we're in global equities, core fixed income, private equity, portfolio completion strategies, real estate and value-add fixed income, as well as timberland. These are some asset classes maybe you don't hear of that frequently. And that's one of the, that's by design. So as you folks know, we have an actual target that's mandated to us of at about 7%. Actually, at 7%. So let me discuss our core philosophies. So this slide puts it into a nutshell, but we focus on our principles on three pillars of investing. And these may not be intuitive. They actually may be a little bit interesting to hear about from an asset manager like ourselves. We would all think that we would focus on cost. That's correct. We also focus on risk, and we also focus on cost. And we believe that no investment analysis is complete without considering equally important all three of these parameters. So if you don't, if you don't follow these three parameters, we believe your analysis or anyone's analysis will be incomplete. Too often, in good times, like we're experiencing today in strong markets, investors become more focused on return, and they lose track of risk controls and perhaps even costs. We are maniacally focused on delivering the best investment portfolio we can, a portfolio engineered, as I said, to do perform well in strong markets, strong environments, like we're experiencing now. And more importantly, in challenging times, too, like we had at the onset of the pandemic more than a year ago. We adhere to our fundamental core beliefs at PRIM that no one can predict the future, so we don't try. No one can predict the direction of financial markets, so we don't try. Our mission at PRIM is to construct a portfolio with components that will perform well no matter what the future holds. And while high rates of return are very important, we have a high actual rate of return, as I mentioned. We never lose sight of risk control. Risk control is critical for capital preservation in down markets. And of course, we are focused on cost efficiencies. We have a saying at PRIM that we value a basis point of cost savings more, yes, more than we value a basis point of return. Why is that? Well, because it's really more important to predict your cost and to predict your returns. You can control your costs. You cannot control the direction of markets. So keeping that in mind, I'm going to bring us the slide. Excuse me one second while I get there. So this slide should give you a quick snapshot in terms of the assets that PRIM manages. And as you can see here, in fiscal year, our June fiscal year, we were at $36 billion. And currently, as of 3/31, and as I mentioned, as of this afternoon, we're over $90 billion. Out of this pool of assets, we pay back to beneficiaries and folks that contribute between $1.5 and $2 billion each year. And our PRIT fund is a large and sophisticated portfolio, with about a third of our investments in private equity, real estate, agriculture, timber, and hedge funds. And I'll hear, I'll talk a little bit more about these sleeves in a minute. And we do this with an all-in cost of 52 basis points, less than one-half of 1%. We believe that this is outstanding value. It is a complex and sophisticated portfolio, as I mentioned, the different portfolios that we manage. And we think that people should think about PRIM as relieving the taxpayer of that burden, of that financial burden. Our goal is to assist, in our specific case, about 300,000 beneficiaries. And if we're successful in what we're doing, we allow, we consider ourselves the taxpayers' friend. Now, let me just bring you to performance so we can, we can add in those two, those two components. So for the one year, so this is the PRIT fund. You should think of the gold bar here as the value added. So for the one year ending March 31st, gross of fees, and if you remove the 52 basis points, you get to the net of fees. So the one-year return was 3.4%, and as you can see, the 10-year was 9%. And as was mentioned earlier by Chris, our since-inception return is over 9%. So the gold bar should tell you, or let me just say, the darker blue bar is our benchmark. So how are we can perform compared to our benchmark? If that number is positive, which in our case it is, that gold bar, we're adding value. Our managers are outperforming the benchmark. They're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Well, let me just bring us back to another slide to help frame the conversation. And I mentioned earlier that I will be discussing markets. So you can see this red line, this big decline here at the beginning. That was day 20 of COVID. That was the most rapid sell-off in history. And as you can see, this recovery has been quite remarkable. The reason why I mentioned our core philosophies initially is no one would have predicted this type of recovery since the trough of the pandemic. So we don't try to, we don't try to predict the future. We try to diversify and have strong contributing assets to the portfolio. We're about 40% global equities. So this specific example, not to bring us back down this recent history that we're covering currently in, but it's a, it's a proof statement in that PRIM is actually doing, performing well, as I previously just showed you our performance over slides. And actually, at the end of March 31st, if you look at the previous 12 months, we had an investment gain of over $21 billion. And that's, as I mentioned, 4% above the benchmark, which indicates that we're doing well compared to, the managers are doing well compared to the, to the benchmark. Let me just bring you a little bit closer into some details here. So taking a little bit of a step back, what portfolios are we in? What is the, what is the, how does the portfolio look? So global equities is between 34% and 44%. We manage the bands. Folks ask me a lot about rebalancing. We rebalance monthly. We don't take any short-term decisions. We don't react to market conditions. We take a methodical approach to our rebalancing, which does occur monthly. So we stay within these bands. And one thing that folks find interesting when I mention this is every, we spend about six months a year focused on our asset allocation. And usually, the end of February, we announce our asset allocation changes. So I'm going to bring you to this next slide. This shows us that we made very few changes at the, at February 21st of 2021. In the previous February, we made zero changes to our asset allocation. So we like to say we have a steady hand. We make small, very small move changes. As you can see here, our private equity band went up about 1%. And private equity is one of our highest-performing asset classes. We're actually one of the, we've been ranked in the top five across the country in private equity for many, many years, and usually we're ranked first or second. And we decreased a tiny bit by 1% our portfolio completion strategies. What did stay the same? Global equities, core fixed income, value-add fixed income, real estate, and timberland. So what this should give you is a sense that we have, we're very comfortable with our portfolio. We're very comfortable with it during good times and as well as bad times. Well, let me just bring us to another slide here. So these bands give us the good fortune to manage what I was saying earlier. We don't try to predict the market, so we don't try. We don't predict the future clearly, so we don't try to do that. And our, and our mission at PRIM is to construct a portfolio with components that will perform well no matter what the future holds. But let's, I did mention I was going to discuss markets. So let me jump into that quickly. So these are the different asset classes that compose the PRIM portfolio. As you can see here in gold, this is the one-year period ending March 31st. We performed 3.4%. And as you can see, all the way to the left, US mid, which are smaller mid-sized companies, not your Facebooks, these are smaller companies within the US stock market, US markets. And they were up about 99%. But you can see what did not perform well on the negative side of that. The portfolio is well-balanced, so we, we do expect that some parts of the portfolio won't perform well when others are doing well. So what are we thinking about currently? What is, what is our thoughts? What do we, what are the market themes that we're paying very close attention to? Recent months have shown evidence of a sustainable rebound in economic activity that could last for several years, as the new administration seems intent on utilizing a slim majority to control Congress, of its control of Congress to advance its stimulus measures. The stimulus measures will likely last for many years, and it's possible that the economy markets will benefit into the future. The Department of Treasury and the Federal Reserve seem to be acting as a team, and they're not really worried about what they call transitory inflation. But again, I've only mentioned these examples to show you that the PRIM portfolio is considering all these different components in our construction. And as a result, the federal, the Fed funds rate remains low, and bond purchasing is ongoing. And it may occur, even if it continues beyond the 2.2% of inflation. Markets are broadening beyond growth stocks that drove returns from many quarters. In fact, value stocks outperformed growth stocks in developed international markets for the last period. This is a good chance that markets will continue to broaden, which means more stocks will do well as the recovery takes hold. The main risk of the strengthening of the markets is a virus flare-up, which could cause the economy to stagger despite the stimulus. So I could go on and on about different components of the PRIT portfolio that we're taking into consideration as the, as we've engineered it. I do want to take a step back, if you have a few more minutes, and discuss the organization, if that's okay? So let me just bring us back here. So the organization is tied into some of our accomplishments. So as you can see, we have a stable organization with exceptional staff. We have many recognitions, which I'll go through a few in the next slide in a moment. But as I, as I discussed earlier, we have strong relative and absolute returns. We have a risk management platform and framework that's very sophisticated and proprietary to PRIM. As I mentioned, we don't, we do not outsource our thinking. We make methodical asset allocation decisions. And I didn't get a chance to discuss Project Save. But Project Save is, we're maniacal about saving costs, as I mentioned. We look to having, we appreciate more basis point of cost reductions versus a basis point of return. And I won't go through all of these, but I will direct our attention, if that's okay, to my last slide. Some recognitions. And I think this, this is worth our, our time here tonight. So we, one that I'd like to direct our attention to is the fourth one from the top. Our private equity portfolio was ranked second by the American Investment Council amongst 176 public pension plans, not based on one-year performance, but based on 10-year performance. And we're the only fund that's been in the top five in the history of that ranking. So that's the return side of the aisle. That's one of our star performers. But to match that with what I mentioned as our core philosophies, if you look at us being GIPS compliant, GIPS compliant is, and we've been GIPS compliant now for three years. So we're always looking to evolve. PRIM has completed the CFA's Institute Global Investment Performance Standards of Integrity and Transparency. Very few, and I believe it's less than six, public pension plans across the country even put themselves through this GIPS compliance. We've only been doing it actually for three years. We're always looking for ways to improve our reporting and our transparency. And I'll marry that into the next, the next bullet point there, which is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association. And I believe we're on our 15th year there. So what I'd like for you to take away is we perform well, we perform above our benchmarks, we're maniacally focused on reducing costs, and we're, we're strong believers in transparency in reporting and integrity of our portfolio. I'll stop there. I could talk all night about PRIM, and I'll take it, I'll take questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Danielle. This is Dave McCarthy. I'm the Chair of Finance and Award One Counselor in Quincy. Yeah, PRIM comes with a very strong background, and I know we'll have several questions. I'd like to start it off with recognizing Counselor Bill Harris, who wanted to say a few words.
Thank you. First off, the presentation was very, very good, and the information that has been passed along to us. So Quincy is obviously, it looks like is in a very good position financially. So I would really, really like to hear, looking at my notes, is, I'd like you to speak about other communities, because that's really, you know, the, the, the other communities that, and throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, how was, how were they comparing to what we're, what we're proposing and, and where we're at?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm really glad you asked. You know, I've, I've been on the job now almost five years, and what I've noticed is a lot of systems on occasion will try to do their own asset allocation, or they'll try to. You know, they, a lot of times, they're looking at the composition of their retirement board. And, you know, we like to say that there may be some retirement boards that on occasion outperform PRIM. For example, there are a few systems that are overweight, a couple of different, a couple of different geographies and sectors. But when you look at the long term, we've seen more systems come all into PRIM. We've actually lost no clients since I've been at PRIM. We have 104 systems, including those three that were mentioned earlier. We actually offer OPEV via PRIM as well, the post-employment benefits. Folks, you actually, in Massachusetts, the laws allows them to contribute those assets to PRIM. And one thing, I will mention, Mr. Harris, that, that I didn't mention earlier. I'm glad you asked me this question. We actually share expenses with everyone. We don't mark up any, any of the fees. We pass them on on a pro rata basis. So when folks and consultants look around and try to compete with PRIM, it's really hard. You know, we do a good job of keeping the expenses low, and we do a good job of allowing systems to contribute assets. And you're basically, in your case, almost 500 million. We use the leverage of our $93 billion to benefit your portfolio in the exact same way. Hope that answers your question. I see another question there from.
Absolutely. No, no, I appreciate your, your answer. And it's, so at this point, I have, I'm, I have to, you know, reading everything. I'm pretty good. So I'm just going to throw it out there, and everybody still has the opportunity to speak, ask questions, but I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Harris. Motion by Mr. Harris. On the motion, I see Mrs. Mahoney would like to talk.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation for PRIM. And I'm hoping we're going to have more discussion other than making motion to, to approve. So one of the questions that I have is, I understand the 475, and that's going to, the 475 million dollars is going to put us in a, in a good position if we were to go this direction with PRIM. Is that what you just said to Counselor Harris? In a competitive situation?
I'm sorry, is this question for me?
It is, I'm sorry.
Could you repeat the question?
You could just repeat what you just said to Counselor Harris in regards to the 475 million dollars if PRIM was to invest that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
It puts us in a very, a very good position, because we'd be working with you. And I just want you to repeat that, so I can understand.
Sure, sure. So being roughly almost 93 billion in assets, the same way your portfolio, let's say, 475 million, would be invested the exact same way, and we would leverage our size and scope and efficiencies dollar per dollar to, to this investment as well. So you would come in equally as all the other participants, and you would be able to take advantage of the leverage that we have with our size, scale, and scope and sophistication. I'm sorry, I quote that exactly as I did earlier, sorry.
That's okay. No, I appreciate that. So I, I don't think PRIM, if we were able to, if we were, because we actually have another $400 million that they're not going to be sending over to PRIM. So I guess if we were to say we're going to send you $875 million, we would be in pretty good shape.
Yeah, again, I mean, we focus maniacally on risk-adjusted returns. We have very strong controls. We're maniacally obsessed with reducing costs. We have set, we have controls to allow the portfolio to be managed effectively, both in up and down markets. Yes, if the, if the total investment was a billion, it would be invested the same exact way.
The same exact way. And we would probably have, anyway, what you just said is you, you're pretty much any other, like, any other way we're investing potentially in that 400 million that's not coming your way. We're probably paying higher fees on it because you're, you have, because you're maniacal in making sure those numbers are lower and be able to get that return higher.
Yeah, I can't speak to the allocation with the remaining part of the portfolio.
No, I understand that, but you, but you did mention that your, either your price points are usually, isn't that what you said, your price points when, when purchasing those?
Yeah, that would be pretty comfortable saying that you wouldn't be able to find a portfolio that has our private market allocation to compete on cost.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. So thank you very much. I do appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Oh, say, Counselor?
I'm assuming that we're going to have to be able to ask questions about other portions of the package that was sent over. Are we?
You can ask, we can go round and round. I didn't know if you had any more questions. I'll recognize anybody else who, who wants to ask any questions tonight to Mr. Danielle. President Liang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Francesco. How are you?
Good evening, thanks.
I think you sort of started to answer this question to, to my other colleagues, but I'm hoping for more direct response if you're able to give it to me. What is the projected cost to manage these funds if it were to be approved and we were to invest the 475 into PRIM? What are, what are the costs that we're looking at either year-over-year or in total? If you have something in mind, just it'd be helpful to know what it is that we're looking at for how much the cost would be to have PRIM manage the investment.
Yeah, the total cost to manage the PRIT fund is 52 basis points. So 1%, it's almost less than half of 1%. So when I first joined PRIM, it was at about 53. We've come down gradually to 52, and we're always looking for ways to. So I hope that's clear. So if you take the $90 billion, 50 basis points would be what the fees would be. And we pass those on on a pro rata basis.
Okay, forgive my then misunderstanding of it, but can you explain a little bit further in what that translates into as far as dollar amounts go?
So if we had $1 million and the fees were 10%, that'd be 100,000. 1% would be, what am I saying? Let me do the math here. So if you had, if you had $100 million portfolio and your fees were 10%, that'd be 10 million. If they were 1%, they'd be a million, and a half a percent would be 500,000, to use dollar terms.
Okay, you said that hasn't changed in how long?
Well, it's trending downward. So since I've been at PRIM, it was at 53 basis points. Now we're hovering around 51, 52 basis points.
Okay, and how, and so is that normal for that to go down? I mean, it's, I would imagine that the better you, you do at managing portfolios and managing investments, and the larger the team grows, that the points would go up, no?
Yeah, it's a great question, and a great.
I'm not saying that I want them to. I just, I, again, I'm trying to, to just understand it.
Yeah, I mean, I can give you an example, something we did recently, where we took out annually that we've been able to save since Michael Trosky, our Executive Director and CIO, has been at the helm. We've saved about $200 million annually in cost savings. And I can follow up with this committee, if you like, with a list of Project Save, projects that we've put together to bring on those savings.
Okay, but again, just to, I'm trying to understand then, what is the thought process for it going? And will it continue to decrease then over time? Like, are fees will not fluctuate in increase, but they, you're imagining they will decrease over time?
Yeah, I mean, I would say if they hover on 50 basis points, we're, we're doing pretty well. I mean, I wouldn't expect them to go. I think that's, it's a lot of hard work to get those fees lower, and we're maniacally focused on that.
Okay, I thi- I didn't think I was gonna harp on this question in particular for so long. I think I'm just confused, so I apologize.
For example, if you, like, we added, let me give you a different example. So we added 10 people to the staff during COVID. Uh, but we found so many other cost savings that those were offset. Remember, we're nine, we're a 90 billion dollar fund. So even if we increase expenses a little bit on staffing, we're reducing them across the portfolio in other ways and cost savings. So for example, if we have, uh, a custodian that manages our portfolio, when we do an RFP, we're able to make them compete for the size of our, size and scope of our business, driving down fees. So we're always looking at different parts of the portfolio and we'll run an RFP to reduce those fees. Um, and the team does a really remarkable job. We're actually, we've been emulated across, um, across the country with other public pension plans in terms of our cost savings effort. We've nicknamed it Project Save. So I'll follow up with this committee with a few articles and a few items that we have on in that scope. And then if you have further questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. That last part of it was really helpful in understanding, so I appreciate it, Francesco. Um, the other question I have for you is just, uh, you named a couple of systems. I assume that means your clients, right? People who have invested. Um, sorry, I'm just not used to hearing the word systems when it comes to that, but I, could you just give me an idea of how many over time have pulled their investments from PRIM? And if so, why? I'm just curious that if we were to, again, invest in PRIM and go down this path, you know, what are our options? I wanna make sure, of course, that we are remaining flexible. I'm not saying that, you know, PRIM is gonna go downhill and things are gonna be awful. But of course, especially with something this large of an investment, right? I wanna fully understand what our options are as a client or as a system as far as, you know, reviewing it over time, you know? Are there any penalties or fees for taking any of the funds out? You know, those kinds of implications. I would love to know a little bit more about that.
Sure, it's a great question. Um, so we take, um, contributions, as we call them, so new inflows and redemptions on the first business day of every month. We've had no clients leave PRIM. Um, in the last, I've been at PRIM going on five years since, since I've been at PRIM. As I showed you the chart of the, the growth of the assets, um, those not only represent growth of market value, but we've had very little new clients. Essentially, we have 104, I believe, out of 107 systems. Um, in Massachusetts, we're actually growing more clients on the OPEB side. So as, uh, cities and towns and governmental entities across Massachusetts, um, allocate funds to OPEB, that's where actually we're seeing the amount of client growth. Uh, but we've had no loss or no attrition, um, the almost five years that I've been at PRIM.
Okay, and.
You answered the flexibility part. At any time on first business day, um, you know, you can, you can put in for, um, withdrawal or redemption of the portfolio. So there's no locks, there's no gates, there's no penalties. Uh, it's actually, I'm glad you, you asked this question because a lot of times private managers will put gates or lock, lockdown periods on the portfolio. We don't have any of that. It's actually a unique, uh, positive feature to the PRIM portfolio.
So on the first business day of every month, if we're reviewing it and we, we deem that it's not, you know, a place we wanna keep our investments, we can withdraw any amount of funds that we have in there for no penalties at all?
Correct.
Interesting, okay. All right, that's all I have for now. I wasn't expecting that, so I'm just gonna, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, President. Um, Chair recognizes Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, can someone answer this for me? So if, for this pension obligation bond to be ultimately successful over the life of, uh, over the tenor of the bond, what's our threshold return requirement? Can Eric answer that?
Yes, um, good evening, Counsel. Uh, through your chairman, um, it would be 7.25%.
Okay, thanks. That's perfect. Thank you. 7.25%. Thank you very much. Um, so anticipating, so, uh, now Francesco, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I see here that in the asset class assumptions based on, uh, 123120, the 30-year expected return is 6.8%.
Let me just bring the slide up for everyone. You know, I'll, um, while I bring the slide up, if you could ask me the question in the meantime.
So, uh, I guess that wasn't a question, that was a statement. Uh, so your, your 30-year expected return based on your asset allocation across classes is 6.8%, which you just, we show here. So now, where?
Two things to keep in mind. These are NEPCs, which is a consultants. It's their capital market assumptions.
Yep.
And these changes here, they're with our portfolio completion strategies and our private equity changes. This is if we manage the portfolio passively. We manage the portfolio actively, so we expect a significant, we expect to outperform. And again, these are some, these are capital market assumptions.
This whole thing is an assumption. No, I appreciate that. So where, um, is there somewhere else in the presentation that I missed that said that we would achieve a greater expected return using active strategies?
Yeah, I mean, these are our capital market assumptions.
Yeah, okay. No, that's, that's all I'm saying. And I know that, I know that you can't predict the future and you don't want to, as you explained, the, the mission of PRIM, which I appreciate. I'm just trying to get to the point that, you know, where this is a risky endeavor, where we're floating a 475 million dollar bond to put, uh, to place with you. Uh, and over an annualized basis of potentially 30 years, our threshold return requirements are 7.25%, which are not outlined in this presentation. Um, so, and have you worked with cities and towns that have, uh, pursued a pension obligation bond strategy before?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. Actually, we tend not to, um, you know, we stick to the items that we can control. Um, it's kind of outside of our purview. Um, um, but we do get asked all the time. Sometimes I know that what they're doing, sometimes they tell me what a, a council's considering or a board is considering.
So, but you've never, you've never managed, uh, the bond proceeds of a pension obligation bond, uh, from any city and town in Massachusetts?
Yeah, I gotta be honest, I wouldn't know if they did send us pension obligation funds or if they didn't.
Okay.
I wouldn't know.
Those are the only questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, uh, Francesco. Uh, I have to say, very impressive, impressive, uh, presentation. You're an impressive guy. Think you're making our, uh, Mr. Mason, our in-house impressive guy, very jealous. Um, I wanted to ask, um, I, it, my, and my question isn't for you. I, I guess it's more toward, uh, the chair. Um, has the bond language been amended to reflect, uh, the destination of PRIM? I, I don't think so, right?
No, I don't think so.
So if I may, I would.
I don't think so, Counselor.
I would ask to amend the bond language, um, by inserting the following, um, through investment in PRIM. Uh, after, in the first line where it says, "for the purpose of", so it's a "for the purpose of, comma, through investment in PRIM, comma, funding all or a portion of the unfunded pension liability." Is that clear, Mr. Chair? What I was?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all, that's all I have. I, I, I have, uh, the utmost confidence in PRIM. I think, um, you know, it's the gold standard, so I feel a lot. Oh, and let me just say, I was about to say, I feel a lot more comfortable with the, the money being managed by PRIM. But I, I think every time I say something positive about PRIM or I ask a question about, um, you know, the, the, the return of the, uh, Quincy Retirement Association, I wanna be very, uh, the retirement board, I wanna be very clear. I appreciate the job that those folks do. Um, I, I don't think they get paid for it. Um, you look at who's on that board. It's all individuals and members of the community that, um, I have a tremendous amount of respect for and trust in. Um, I think what we're talking about here is, uh, is not an indication that we have any negative opinion of them. And I just wanna take the opportunity to thank them for the work they do. So, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, for that amendment, too. That makes a lot of sense. Um, any other, any, Counselor, oh, uh, let me just, uh, go back to Mr. Danielle for a sec.
Yeah, I wanna reiterate that point. I think that's really, I mean, I spent a lot of times, we do about 70 to 90 meetings a year. And I should have mentioned that from the outset. I really, um, feel strongly about the work that the retirement boards do across the Commonwealth. It's a big ask. Uh, they have multiple components of their roles. Uh, it's complex. If you ever looked at Chapter 32 law, it's probably the most complex in, in the state. And I'm not an attorney, but that's what the attorneys say. Um, so, I mean, uh, I'm very empathetic about the role and the position and the role that they have and what they do. And it is a big ask and, um, I just wanna, that's a great point from Palmucci. I wanted to reiterate that point.
Thank you, sir. Uh, no, it is, uh, all the boards, I know our board, um, there's some great people on it that put in a lot of time and, uh, work closely with the city and are very dedicated to Quincy, so it's a great point. I, um, I'd like to recognize Counselor DeBarna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation, Francisco. Um, listening to my fellow counselors, um, with their different, uh, uh, you know, outlook on this entire bond, if it's possible, um. My main concern really is the risk and, and, and whether it's managed correctly. Um, you talked about your benchmarks and conditions and bands and, um, you know, currently we're, we're putting this into our, um, budget every year and paying no interest on it and we're, we're paying upon it, um, with, with zero interest. And now we're put in a position to get the unfunded 475 million dollars and, um, and then starting to pay interest and terms. And, um, I think this kinda alerts a little bit to, um, maybe Eric Mason a little bit. I, I know, Francisco, you're, 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 a lot of my colleagues have asked you the questions, um. Uh, are these numbers based on a 30-year bond?
Sorry, I got a whole few there. Uh, just, uh, a small, just contextualization, Counselor. We are paying interest on this unfunded liability. We're paying 7.25% a year. Uh, it's not zero percent interest. The, all the modeling that you guys have seen, that the Counselor has seen, has been for between 2% and 3% of bond rate. At 30 years, 20 years in equal term, which is about 17 years.
Okay, let me ask you this, is, um, because right in the writing here of, uh, 2021-038 appropriation, 475 million dollars to fund all or a portion of the unfunded funded pension liability of the retirement system of the city of Quincy. What if this, uh, council wants to cut some of this, um, pension liability at 475? What is the implications of that? Just to see how it's being managed, kinda getting a little taste of how, um, the city can do and PRIM can do with, with our numbers over a portion of time. Can you elaborate a little bit if this full 475 wasn't bonded?
Yes, so there's two issues there. One is, uh, the inherent risk and the other is the appropriatorial actions the Council has stated. I'll start with the appropriatorial actions. The Council would have to, um, well, the administration would have to restructure the budget and the Council would have to vote to increase the amount of the unfunded liability proportionate to the decrease that is taken in the pension obligation. The second point is, um, and probably gonna sound like too much of an economist right now, is what we call time series risk. So right now, interest rates are very, very, very low. And we can, and well, we can't predict markets. We can use historic data to formulate this thing called cumulative distribution, which is the likelihood of something to increase over time. And right now, there's about a 95 to 98% chance interest rates are going to rise in the, in the subsequent quarters. Right, we went to market, uh, uh, 10 days ago and we got a 1.75% interest rate. That will not be possible if the Fed actions continue the way they do over the next year. And that is very simply because they are targeting 2% inflation. In the Fisher equation, which is the governing mathematics of this, say that your interest rate is equal to inflation plus your real interest rate. So even if capital markets don't want any return on their money, they're willing to borrow the money to us for free, it is still going to be over 2%. So the biggest risk here right now is that we are in a very unique time in the history of asset markets and the history of bonding markets where we can engage in a note like this, or I should say a bond like this, at an interest rate that is so dramatically low. So we say, let's push this off for a year. It is going to cost a lot more money. For example, if it goes up 2% in a year, that will double the principal over a 30-year period. So you'd be paying back, uh, almost, you know, 750 million dollars plus the principal plus interest. A 1% change results in dozens of millions of dollars in savings. Um, so the, the two major parts is the Council would have to, um, appropriate money for the unfunded liability and that would be, that would increase pension contribution. And we'd be exposed to this very, very likely increase in interest rates over the next 12 months.
So, so let me ask you this, um, Mr. Mason. Are you anticipating doing a one-year band and then coming back and bonding for 20 or 30 years? Or what are you looking to do?
We would bond immediately for 30 years.
Bond it immediately?
Lock in that low interest rate.
All right, that, that kinda solves this, the equation for me. Um, I just listened to my fellow counselors and just lis- and, and talking to a lot of different people over the last few weeks. And it, it can be confusing to understand and, um, I would like to put, I would like to do it over a less duration. I, I'm not so comfortable with 30-year bonds. Uh, I'm a little more comfortable with 20 years. Um, is, is it possible for me to make an amendment to the vote and put it over a 20-year bond?
Counselor, may I address that?
Yes.
So, um, it's important to note that if we get an interest rate below 2%, which is likely, if you save more money over the duration of a longer bond, when we talk about real dollars today, because of the, the net present value, which is the calculation we use to weigh how much a bond is worth today. If inflation is above 2% and the bond rate is below inflation, that means it's decreasing in real today dollars over time. Additionally, a 30-year bond allows us to put money aside in a savings reserve that is roughly five times bigger than if we do a 20-year note. So in that.
Aren't you, so aren't you paying more interest over the duration of 30 years than 20 years?
You are if you don't adjust it to today's dollars. And that's important. We, whenever we judge finances, we have to talk about things in today's dollars. And if inflation is targeted at 2%, which is what the Federal Reserve said they're targeting and it seems to be what Secretary Yellen and President Biden want to target, um, it is very likely that in terms of real dollars, it's cheaper to do 30 years than for 20 years.
I don't know, I, I don't know about that. I'm not so sold on that concept. I mean, you're saying things are fluctuating yearly and, um, is there anybody else that can, um, is, there's a couple of board members here, um, could, could, um, Susan O'Connor, the auditor, elaborate a little on that? Is there anybody else that can elaborate besides you, Eric? Um, maybe?
This is a, this is a generally accepted financial calculation. Net present value is not an Eric Mason model. It is something that's used in every single financial institution around the world. Um, I'm more than happy for somebody else to weigh in. Um, I certainly don't, the body can do as the body chooses, so I'm.
Are you giving, are you giving your general opinion, Eric? Because I, I would like to. Yeah, because I, I would think that a 20-year would be less interest over the, of a 30-year, uh, bond.
In, in nominal dollars, but in real dollars.
It is, yep.
Depending on what the inflation rate is, it's not. Like money, uh, prices grow over time. But if you walk in a rate today on a 30-year bond, that does not change for 30 years.
I'm just thinking about, this is a big risk. You'll, you're coming to us with 25 million short of a half a billion dollars to put onto the backs and have us bond this. Um, this is the biggest appropriation of funding that's ever come in front of the council that I've been on here. And it'd probably be the most biggest ones for a long time. I mean, this is something that's very important to put on the backs of the city council. Uh, we're, we're the checks and balances of the system. I mean, this is not, um, here's your presentation and, and, and this is why we have to ask questions. This is why the council is, is asking questions and, and, and diving into this. And that's, you know, this is on the, you know, the backs of us, because essentially, and I've talked to a lot of folks that are in the system and a lot of folks that are gonna be going into the system. Essentially, if you really think about it, almost all these councils are gonna be going into the system at some point. Um, some of them are already vested at the 10 years, some of them are already in it, and some of them are, are creeping into the 10-year mark. So essentially, this is, this is something that's gonna benefit, um, not only, you know, firefighters and police officers and teachers and, and folks that work for the administration and it also essentially is us as well. Um, so we, we need to make the right decision tonight. Um, um, I'm glad it was held off and we're, we're asking more questions as we go along and hopefully we can come to some type of, uh, consensus of, uh, of the counselors. Um, you know, I'm, I'm gonna yield my time, um, or to the rest of the counselors. or to the rest of the counselors that want to speak or anybody that wants to come back and if anybody else wants to elaborate a little bit on 20 years versus 30 years and their opinion would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DeBarna. President Liang?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I actually think I saw Counselor Mahoney's hand go up first.
Okay, Counselor Mahoney?
So just a quick question on that. Eric, you gave us these spreadsheets for the, you know, a 30-year, a 20-year, and I think the Equibond portion. And you kind of showed us from the 2% all the way out to 3% on all of them. Am I correct?
Yes, Counselor.
Okay, and what you're saying now is that if we don't go 30 years, we won't be able to get the 2. Is that what you're suggesting? The longer? Okay, I just want to make sure I understand. So because it doesn't matter really whether the length of the bond. The really, the real interesting thing is that it's the loan payments that we have to make. Is that correct? Because I mean, basically, our budget is based on a 30-year loan payment, but the savings to the constituents and the taxpayers, if we were to do this correctly, the biggest savings would be to bond it out in a shorter period of time and pay it off faster. It would mean that the investment would mean that we would be having a level, a level set payment schedule. It might be more that we're paying. However, we pay it over a shorter period of time and probably less, it would be less risky. Even with PRIM investing 50% of the 475, 50% of total obligation to the pension obligation bond. And again, I'm not saying that the Quincy Retirement Board has done a poor job investing. That was the administration that said it. He was the one who was going around telling everybody that the Quincy Retirement Board was not doing a good job investing the retirement, the portion of the retirement that we're working on. But the fact of the matter is that, you know, when we're talking about this, the biggest savings would be if we were to bond it out over a shorter period of time and pay a higher amount. Is that correct? The biggest savings to the taxpayers.
It's a more complicated answer than yes or no, Counselor. I would say if we're experiencing inflation-driven markets, which we are now, then I would say no, 30 years is better if it comes in under 2%. Because money, dollars are worth less over time. So the debt payment you're making 28 years from now, even though it's the same amount you'd be paying next year, would be less real dollars.
But we're using the premise, selling this to the general public. We're telling people it's like refinancing your mortgage, refinancing your home. So we're really trying to do it, not in a longer period of time. So the longer you do it, it's better to do it in a shorter period of time in that particular case. And, you know, it's real money either way, whether it's 30 years or, you know, the Equibond system to fund it out to 2037. It's still, it's still, it's still, it's still real money that we have to pay.
Well, there's nominal versus real. Those are common financial terms. Nominal is just dollar sum today. Real adjusts for the values those dollars can buy.
The other person that I had is just out of curiosity, because I know, you know, the other 50%, Makita, because I don't, are we going to be talking about the package, the Makita portion of the package? I just, maybe Counselor McCarthy could tell me. Or is it?
I think the Makita portion that went out to everyone was just, to be able to look over. I don't think there's anyone on from Makita. I think it was all PRIM tonight, Mr. Mahoney.
Okay, so with the Makita portion, I guess my question in regards to PRIM would be, you know, what is, what is the Makita investment expense? And then also, what's the, you know, how are we comparing that to PRIM? Because we really need to know how to compare that to PRIM. So what's Makita's consulting fee each year? Plus, what's the investment expense so that we can compare it? So the fact that we got a package tonight with Makita's information in it is a step ahead compared to where we were when we had the last meeting in regards to this. But we really can't compare it. And my other question is, does, you know, do we, does the Quincy Retirement Board have a contract with Makita currently?
Who are you directing that to? Anyone that can answer it?
Anybody who can answer it, yeah.
Chair recognizes Sue O'Connor.
Thank you. Currently, the Quincy Retirement Board does have a contract with Makita. It's a seven-year contract that we entered into in February of 2021. Every seven years, we are required to issue an RFP. And we had just done that and we go through an interview process. We review the applicants of the RFP. And at that time, the board felt that it was in its best interest to continue with Makita.
So it's a seven, so it'll end in 2028? Is that right, Susan?
I'm assuming yes.
Okay.
We would go out to bid again in 2028.
Okay, and when did we, and then this, I guess this is to Mr. Mason. Mr. Mason, when did the city determine that this was probably the best object, a best direction for the city to actually do the pension of this particular bond, the 475 million dollars?
We've been weighing it since about early October.
So since last October, we've been weighing this. And, you know, I guess this is where I go back to the, so there's several things that I get concerned with. Because when I was researching the other communities that you had mentioned, you know, they put together, they put together an investment, an investment committee, Andover specifically. They talked about it for well over a year. They worked with their retirement board. They came up with their number. They explained what other investments they were going to do within their community. They, they kind of really did a full package for it. I think it just went to, they just voted on, I think it's at the state right now, and I think they have a 20-year note obligation for it. So they went for 20 years. So I realize it's apples to oranges in the sense that, you know, Andover is a large town and we are a big city and they have a town committee and those things are different. However, you've been talking about since last, last October. The administration's been saying Quincy Retirement Board has been making poor investment choices. They resigned a contract with Makita in February and we're sitting here tonight and we're going to bond 475 million dollars potentially with PRIM, when we should potentially be talking about the fact that the, the two things, they could negate each other. PRIM could do a fantastic job and the Quincy Retirement Board, if it stays in the, stays in the same competitive situation it's been in the last couple of years, or vice versa could happen. I'm not sure. I'm just saying that those two things, that there's things that should have been maybe worked on together. So right now, we have an administration saying that this is how we're going to level set the, the, the budget by coming up with a streamlined payment process, but we're not looking at the overall big picture of how we can make sure that we're not going to end up with a second unfunded liability. My, I do have a question as well, that there was some inconsistencies because the Stone Report that provided us, the new Stone Report that you provided, was adjusted to 71021 and it had 449 million dollars. And I think that includes the Quincy Housing Authority. But in the previous report from our previous meeting, that report had a breakdown with the unfunded liability between Quincy College and the Quincy Housing Authority. And I think when we do our budget, we don't include the Quincy Housing Authority or Quincy College. The unfunded liability that we put into our budget every year that has grown doesn't include those pieces because those two pieces are funded directly by Quincy Housing as well as, as well as Quincy College. So is the 475 including bonding out Quincy Housing Authority and Quincy College? That question's for Mr. Mason.
Does it include Quincy Housing Authority? It does not, because those employees belong to a quasi-state entity. It does include Quincy, it does include Quincy College.
So the numbers, the numbers were very different between the 2019 Stone Report and the 20, the recent one that went to 712021. So I thought that was, that was, that inconsistency seemed a little weird because the breakout in the 2019 showed the Quincy Housing and it was about 401. And when you looked at the, and I don't have everything in front of me, but when you looked at the, I think it was the auditor, CPA was O'Connor's, that was the one that was a draft. We didn't get the updated draft. But when you could tie up the Stone Report to the auditor's report and on this time, the number has grown and I can't really tie it up. So I have some issues with that. And then also, on page three of the Stone Report, when I'm looking at the assumptions, there's a notable change in the actuarial rate of return. On the, in the last meeting, it was 7.5 and tonight it's 7.25. So I was just curious, you know, why that was. But then also, when I looked at the, when looking at the, I think it's the Standards and Poor's, when I was looking at the Standards and Poor's, the assumptions were showing that it was closer to 6%. So I just, there's just a lot of inconsistencies that I was seeing when I was going through these things. And I'm curious to know, I'm just curious to know, you know, are we tying those things back to compared to some of the auditor's notes, some of the things that we're seeing? I'm concerned about that too, because there's a lot of foundational issues that I'm seeing in these packages that you sent to us, but comparing them. I don't know, I don't know who submitted them, so I don't know if it was Mr. Walker.
I didn't know if there was a question.
Yeah, the question is that there's inconsistencies. So Stone Reports, the Stone Report you just submitted to me, comparison to the last package you sent to me, the numbers are, they're changed. So.
They changed because the Retirement Board voted to decrease the assumption rate and it's two years of market returns.
So it's changed, well, it's changed from 2019 to 2020. Okay, so that's why it changed from 7.5 to 7.25?
Yeah, the unfunded liability changed because these are markets and as returns grow.
Mr. Mason, just checking, because you know, we were told that we had the full package the last time. So I'm just comparing one, one report to another. So I'm just, and again, when I was looking at the, when I was looking at the, the Standards and Poor's, I think it was the Standards and Poor's report, it was also, it was basically saying that, that those were also different. So you're just saying that that's part of it. The other question that I had on page five of the Stone Report, it said that the, and I don't know, this is, this is just something I read and I'm not sure if you can validate this. It noted that the maximum funding schedule length allowed by the state law is 19 years, which would bring us to 2040. So, and then I noticed that Andover's only went out 20 years. So I was just curious to know, is there a maximum? Like I know we have to, is it not true that we have to take this pension obligation bond if it gets approved? Don't we have to go to the state to have final approval and will they approve 30 years?
I would respectfully defer that to Mr. Walker. I believe he's talked to A and F more directly on this.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that is correct, Counselor. There's a process that follows the appropriation or authorization with both the Secretary of Administration and Finance and the Division of Local Services within DOR that will put together the full package and prove the full package as it goes to market. And that includes the term 20-year, 30-year equity term. That process is driven largely by the legislation. They're there, they're there to help us. But it is a, it is a review process and that is the next step.
So what is, let's just say if we play it out and we were looking for 30 years and for some reason, they say, no, it has to be 20 years. Because I don't know if Andover's wanted to be 30 years and they ended up being 20 years. I just noticed that they, that they, I know they were playing out some similar assumptions and in the end, it looks like it's going to be 20 years for them. Out of curiosity, what happens if we approve tonight something that's for 30 years? And let's say it goes to the state and they say, no, it has to be 20 years. How's that blow up? I mean, I was curious.
Well, through you, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't, it doesn't blow up, Counselor. It may require an adjustment, but we're also under the understanding that the state isn't necessarily going to carry a heavy hand when it comes to the term. That, you know, the city, to a great extent, is going to be able to dictate the term that it wants based upon the legislation that was approved in 2006. So while there is a review process, as I mentioned, they're there to help us. If the city goes to them with a competent, effective case for a 30-year bond, that's the direction that we're going to be able to go. If it's 20 years, we'll go 20.
Well, I'm just, I'm just repeating. So this is really something that I read in the Stone Report. So it basically says, the maximum funding schedule length allowed by the state law is 19 years to 2040. This would make the case of a pension obligation bond should have to be, should that be, I'm just questioning, should that be 20-year maturity date? I'm just, it's something that was noted that this would also minimize, this is not them, this is me, I was just saying, this would minimize our financial risk and the bond of the interest cost. That's just, it's just a concern that I have and I just, I wanted to note that. Because, you know, when I'm looking at all of this and I'm questioning and I realize we have to get it approved by the, by the state and I'm looking at how other communities are doing it, because you gave me the list. I was just checking to see how that, I just know Andover's have gone out to 20 years. Their recommendation was 20 years. It just makes me concerned that maybe we're spreading this out too long because at the end of the day, it's still real money. And, you know, the longer you go out, there's a chance that, you know, it's lots of fluctuations in the market. There's, and we're less, we're saving less, you know, the shorter period of time, if you look at the shorter period of time, 15 years, 20 years to 30 years, the less you go out, the more money taxpayers will save. That's just, it's just, you do end up paying more per, you know, per year for that, for that bond, but you save more money by, you know, spreading it out over less years. Can I just ask one other question to, one other question that I forgot about Makita? What, is it seven years? How, it's been seven years, you renewed the Makita for seven years. And what was the contract before this last one? Was it seven years as well?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and then how long has Makita been the, the investment advisor for Quincy Retirement Board? So that's 14 years.
I believe, I believe 1989, around there. I'd have to double check though, but I think it's around there.
So for a long, long time, so.
Yes, they have, yeah.
Okay, so. And just, this is one last question and I'm not suggesting that we would do this, but I'm just curious. Because you did a seven-year contract, is there any way to end the contract early? What's the penalty for ending that contract early if you don't make your investments?
I would have to check on that, Counselor.
But really strong, this is another one of, you know, we're making these decisions. It's based on, you know, we're making big decisions for the city of Quincy. Makita has been our investment advisor since 1989. I know you go out to bid for that, because Retirement Board does. They've had mixed, you know, not me, I'm not, this is not me, this is my research when reading and listening. The administration has basically said this had mixed reviews in regards to their return. They haven't, they haven't really done a good, but this is again, I'm paraphrasing, but this is what the administration has said, has not done a good job in the investments. Now, that's not to knock anybody on the Quincy Retirement Board. I really strongly want to make sure you understand that. This is strictly what I've been, what I've read and what I've, what I've learned to understand from the administration from this request for the 475 million dollars. Now, it's just interesting that Makita has been there since 1989 and, and that's been the, that was the, that was the administration suggesting that we haven't been doing a good job in the returns. I'm sure there are other reasons that we, that we, that those returns weren't doing well. But again, I would go back to the fact that we do have to understand what their fee is and then also the investment expenses, because I would like to see those compared to PRIM, to see what those are. And then also understand if there is an opportunity to end that contract, what the penalty is. Because if they don't, you know, if it's knowing that you'd be able to kind of estimate along with missing your 7.25, if you're 1% under, how much the cost is going to be. But I just, I just wanted to make sure that the record is wrong. Thank you.
All set, Counselor?
For now, thanks.
President Liang?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I had asked this question last time and I think that I was waiting for some follow-up information to clarify the difference. Eric, I think you and I were talking about this during the last meeting, was if I'm looking at the right thing in the paperwork here, it says that the current unfunded liability for fiscal year '22 is just a little bit over 445 million. So I'm just trying to get clarification again about the difference between that and the 475 million that's being requested. I didn't see anything in the additional information that was provided to us. There's quite a bit that Mr. Walker sent over and I appreciate that. But in reviewing that, I didn't see any explanation as to why there's a $30 million difference in the ask.
Madam President, the by state law, we can, we can only appropriate what the actuary report for the unfunded liability is going to be. So as, we'll have another actuary company come in and they will do the calculation just before we go to market. And say it comes in at 460 million, 450 million, we can only bond that amount. We could, without the permission of the body, we can't go over. So if we had places at 450 and say the valuation comes in at 458 right before market, we did have an $8 million deficit. So similarly to MSBA, we bond for the entire school building and then we only withdraw what we need to pay the note. Own, we only go to market bonds we need to pay for the building and we accept the reimbursement. So the Council is proving a higher cap, but we're barred by state law for doing anything higher than what that last actuary report is going to show.
Right, no, I understand the tactic behind it, right? I just don't understand the reasoning. And I think maybe because it's two different things we're talking about. If you're talking about the example you're using with the MSBA, I can understand, okay, you know, based off of the history of, you know, the shifting cost of materials to build a new school, that's why you're bonding for the higher amount. When it comes to bonding for this though, to cover for an unfunded liability amount, I'm not understanding why we're looking at the gap that we are, particularly one that's $30 million.
A market, just to give an example, a 1% market correction is almost $5 million. So if we have, this week alone, markets have fallen 1%. So that in one week, there was a $4 million shift. Speaking of, if it's our funds. So by the time this gets approved and is in front of there, you could see a $4 million swing, a 4% swing. A 4% swing would realistically be a $16 million to $20 million increase, which would put us much closer to that 475. Additionally, the actuary table expressions, if actuary tables have changed in that time, we have people living longer, that can also affect it.
Okay, so, but where do you get the, I know you're using 4% as an example. Are you using it as an example based off of history or you're just pulling that number 4% from somewhere?
So the long and the short of that is that we look at like the volatility trends over different one-month periods. And if you do that and say, hey, this is your monthly volatility rate and you assign that against what your risk tolerance. And in the shortest terms, you do three standard deviations, because that means there's a 99.5%. And what, in the shortest terms, you do three standard deviations, because that means there's a 99.5% likelihood that that number is going to not exceed that number. Um, that's, I mentioned cumulative distribution earlier. That's what, partially what cumulative distribution is. So by doing that math, it gives us a 99.5% confidence level that the number we go to the actuary, when we go to market will be higher.
Okay. So you're saying, and you said a 4% swing would average out to be about 16 to 20 million dollars, right? So like, let's say on average, you're anticipating that by the time this does go out to bond, if it ends up going through, that we're looking at a variation of close to seven to eight percent now in a difference?
It's.
Swing is possible?
Yeah, that's very unlikely to happen, but it is a possible market event. And we're going to save anything that's below the 475 million. So this is merely to prevent another appropriational action needed to be taken by the council. It doesn't change how much is actually going to be.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a very large cushion and not one that I was fully understanding coming into prior to this, but I appreciate you explaining. The other question I have for you is when you were talking to, to Counselor Debona, when he was asking these questions earlier, it actually, it was great. And I appreciate his line of reasoning because there was some questions I had in here that I think followed that line of reasoning as well. And first and foremost, I just want to clarify, is this a fixed or variable, uh, rate that we're looking at for the bond?
This is fixed, counselor.
Going to be a fixed? Okay. All right. And then my follow up to that is if it's going to be a fixed rate and, you know, interest rates are, again, just trying to fully understand this, right? The thought process is because interest rates are so low right now, you know, locking in a fixed interest rate for anything, whether it's a bond, a car loan, a refinancing your home, whatever the case may be. Again, now is the time to do it because interest rates, as we have seen actually over the last even six months, are starting to grow up and, and increase, right? Than was, let's say, you know, Q3 or Q4 of last year. So I am understanding of that and I'm seeing it, you know, come out in practical terms, right? So understanding that we're coming into this, bonding at a fixed rate is, is good and, and, and I appreciate that. But the flip side to that, which I'm understanding as well and seeing on the other side is the savings, right? Whether it's savings accounts or CDs that I have out there, I'm seeing that, you know, the decrease in interest rates on the good side of it, when you're trying to refinance something that you owe money on, I'm seeing it as a negative on the other side, that my money is not earning as much as it was in the past, right? And so, you know, I, 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 this isn't, I guess, how much of a question, but again, just understanding that line of reasoning that Counselor Debona had and, and talking to you about this, with even understanding now the $30 million gap comes from a potential decrease, I'm sorry, increase. And what we're seeing to have to cover, right? The difference between the unfunded liability. I mean, these are all the areas that I'm coming from that I'm really concerned about. I'm super excited to see Francesco here today and to hear that, you know, PRIM is an option and it's an option that we want to explore. I think that's incredible and I'm, I'm really excited to learn more about them and what they do, um, for future investments as well. You know, I'm disappointed to hear that, you know, we have a seven year, um, agreement that we just entered into with Makita. It sounds like we had a lot more flexibility had we, you know, moved those funds into PRIM. Um, and again, something I'm really excited to learn more about as well. Not a reflection at all on the retirement board. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that I'm learning a lot more about this process. And I'm really excited to see, you know, in the future, if we are able to move the funds outside of Makita into PRIM, I think that it sounds like anyway, something to our benefit. The other piece of that though, that is really concerning to me is that, you know, we have not yet invested in PRIM yet. And while the numbers look good and while there's a lot of flexibility there that I appreciate, because again, I want to be able to take my money out when it's not earning what I want it to, right? And invest it elsewhere. I want that kind of flexibility. As it stands today, with the rates being so low, again, I'm, I'm not comfortable with having such a large investment go into, um, whether it's PRIM or Makita, right? Knowing that interest rates are low everywhere, right? They're, they're low if you want to borrow. They're also low if you want to invest. And that's where my concern ultimately is, is that if and when the time comes and, you know, the market fluctuates so much so that it's, it's to a disadvantage even more so that the interest and returns that we're getting are even lower than what they, you know, potentially are right now, we're now going to have to not only pay back the interest on the bond that we're taking out, we're also going to now have to pay back the difference in, again, an even larger difference, right? And the unfunded liability that we currently bonded for. Does that follow, did you follow my line of reasoning, Eric? It's just, again, I apologize for that question. I'm just, I, you know, from what you're.
Maybe put you a little bit, uh, add some coloring to that if that's, if that's okay, counselor.
By all means, yeah. I just, again, that's, it's tough because I, I do appreciate, again, you know, the, the flexibility and the options that we have and where we're going to be putting this money. It's just that, given the amount that we are putting in there at the interest rates that we're getting it at, which is phenomenal. I, I, again, have also seen just on the, on the personal and private side, right? Investments are also returning a lot less than they had ever been in the past as well. And so I just don't, I'm not comfortable with 475 million at that amount, you know, maybe a couple hundred, a couple hundred thousand, sure, but 475 million is a lot to, to take that kind of a risk.
Just to address a couple of those.
Sure.
Points, because they're very, I mean, I know you have a small business background. I would say I have a family business, have a small business for lockdown. I, you know, you're a hundred percent right. Checking account, savings account, CDs are returning very low. That's why it's so important that we invest in markets. And that's why I am very, I, I, to me, PRIM, we does a lot of equity investment, private equity investment. It's important to invest in those because as the Federal Reserve and as the Treasury engages in quantitative easing, the reason they're doing that is to spur up markets. So while you're not getting returns in savings accounts and you're not getting returns in certified deposits, that's because interest rates are being suppressed by economic, by monetary policy to spur up markets. Um, so if you're not investing in the stock market, if you're not investing in private equity, if you're not investing in, I would say bonds, but, uh, be cautious of that one. You are actually going to, you, you have this opportunity cost loss. Because if your money sits in a savings account and the stock market goes up 9%, and that's triggered by Fed policy saying, we want inflation to go up 2%, your money just lost 2% sitting in the bank instead of making 9% minus inflation in the market. So it, it, I, the magnitude is certainly, um, I, I certainly understand that, you know, 1% variation in number this large is, is more money than the average person makes in their entire life, plus a million. So it's, it's incredibly reasonable to be like, I want to have a solid understanding of these different opportunity loss. Because if we mess up by half a percent, it's, it's a lot of money. But the opportunity cost of just having this money, um, parked on the sideline can be more expensive than investing in the market. When you invest with PRIM, their private equity component is what nobody has access to. And that is a huge driver of this. But because you're seeing low interest rates, you're seeing low quantitative, you're seeing low CDs, that can, a lot of that is done to spur equity markets historically.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. It was just a couple of examples that I was referring to, but you certainly operate on a very different level than I do on that. So I just, again, you know, I would love to see, because it is such a significant amount and because, you know, just based off of everything I have learned and, and, you know, observed over the years, and certainly that's not a lot compared to some folks, right? So I'm trying to make the best educated decision I can here, but I do also understand that there is, um, you know, a very high risk, particularly with an amount this large, right? Where if we, to your point, see any percentage of a fluctuation, right? This, I, I, I believe anyways, is going to put us at a severe disadvantage where we then again, have to still owe on this bond, right? Whether it's 475 or the 445, whatever it, you know, comes out to be at the end. But in addition to that, we still have to make up the remaining amount that we're paying into this unfunded liability, right? And so I just, you know, the way I see it is that, you know, if we're currently owing on something and it, it does have an interest rate tacked onto it, right? And we are paying that. Okay, fine. We need to find the funds to do it and we do so through the budget. But now if I'm saying, well, this bank has given me X amount of dollars at a great interest rate, I can pay it all off at once. And now I'm just paying back into this, um, into this loan that I'm taking out, right? Yeah, sure. But then for whatever reason, if now the amount that I had owed, that I used the bond to pay for suddenly increases because my interest rates are decreasing on that, right? And the return is decreasing. I don't have the money to pay for it. Now I'm paying on both sides of it, right? And so I think at, at some point, you know, to an extent, I think this is actually an extremely creative, I think brilliant way to approach a problem that sits in front of us. I just can't get myself past the risk that comes with that, right? I mean, this is what this whole process is about, is finding creative solutions. And I think that what the work that all of you have put into this is just that. It's being extremely creative in ways that I could never even imagined, you know, and I'm grateful to have learned, you know, how all of you got to this point. I just, again, am not comfortable about with the risk that comes with it. And just even hearing about this, this massive swing that's going to happen and a $30 million difference that we need to make up just in the time of the bond itself. I mean, just the, the volatility in the request itself, right? Just further gives me that sort of, um, discomfort with how much these things can change over time so quickly with even in a few months. And applying that to a $475 million ask is something that I'm just, I'm deeply uncomfortable with. And if we could, you know, take the existing, uh, you know, retirement funds that we have, move them into PRIM and then see again, you know, the flexibility that we want to see on the city level and managing that, uh, making sure that it's a good relationship, it's returns that we want to see, the retirement board is happy with it. Then moving forward to Counselor Debona's point, taking sort of a step approach, I think could be something that, you know, is a little bit more conservative that, you know, I, I certainly would feel more comfortable with, right? But coming straight out of the gate and saying, we're going to fund the full amount and then invest in PRIM that way. And that's going to be our first step out of the gate. It's just a bit extreme based off of, again, the volatility of, of how much a small percent of a difference can make. So, Eric, again, I appreciate you, you clarifying. And Mr. Chairman, thank you for, for indulging me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, President Liang. Chair recognizes Counselor Andronico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I believe Mr. Walker had touched on this, uh, a little earlier, but I just wanted to double check on sort of where our conversations are right now with A and F, uh, and potentially securing a 30 year term. Uh, and the reason I bring that up is mainly because the state to this point is, is holding municipalities, uh, to that fit by fiscal year 2037. So this off, um, and you know, we'd be pushing past that benchmark by 15 years. Uh, I'm just not certain if, if you're getting an indication how comfortable they are right now, that idea.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. No, no, counsel. I mean, they want to see the authorization before we have a firm conversation. I will say that a 20 year has been the past practice. Uh, it's our opinion that 30 year works, keeping in mind that we are fully funded as of this appropriation. We cut the check, we are then fully funded. We're not extending out our time period to be fully funded. We're taking the notes out to be funded today. And I just want to go back and, and, and just touch a little bit on, on the risk factor is that that's, gets back to some of the things that we've said from the beginning, that the risk that everyone's raised, individually and as a group, it's largely the risk that exists whether we do nothing or whether we do this, but without the upside. Without the upside of a lower interest rate, without the upside of the savings, without the upside of the budget flexibility that this gives us. Keep in mind, counselors, that every year we present the appropriation for the, the full pension liability or the, the annual appropriation for that. It goes up $3 million every single year and it is probably one of the fewest things or the, that's spent the least amount of time, uh, discussing. It's just, it is a fixed cost. It goes up based upon, uh, a lot of different factors. Um, and this actually, something of this magnitude reduces that risk where it would be a set number every single year. As long as we meet the, the same, as long as we meet the same criteria that we were expected to meet today, we meet it going forward with a little bit of give, then it's, uh, that, that risk, like I, like I said, is, is the same risk that we, we faced before. But, you know, certainly, Counselor, back to your original point that, you know, 20 year, 30 year, um, you know, the administration is certainly open to either.
That, Mr. Walker. Um, but just touching on that, I mean, if, if the past practice has been 20 years, uh, from A and F, I, I do have some concerns with operating under the presumption that it would be for 30 years, especially because the budget that we're going to be discussing later on this week presumes a 30 year term, uh, for the bond. And that would have some give, um, and, and we would have to maybe make departments head, department heads make a, another adjustment and wait another week, uh, which I, I don't think we would like to do. So, I mean, there's, there's that, that to consider. Beyond that, I had a question for Mr. Mason, um, just regarding interest rates. I think at one point tonight, you may have mentioned an interest rate potentially in the, the 1% to 2% range. I was hoping you could touch on that, uh, a little bit more. And if you could give us this background and, and your current opinion, won't hold you directly to it, but in, in your opinion, does the length of the term of the bond impact the interest rate there? And I do see Francesco might want to jump in as well. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I have more of a, a different question. I actually have to put my kids to sleep. Um, if there are any other questions for me, I'm happy to take them or continue the conversation later, but, just wanted to recognize the time and I do have to, to jump. If that's okay with folks.
Just throw them on this meeting. I'm sure we can put them to sleep. I have no further questions for, uh, for, for Mr. Danielle.
Anyone?
Well, I did write down, I am going to follow with some project save analogies, um, for Nina Liang. And I did see the, the active management. So any questions for, um, Ian Mahoney as well, for the other folks? I'm more than happy to take them in writing and respond, uh, um, in written form, if that's more appropriate for this, um, for this line of questioning.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Danielle for the presentation and, uh, for a lot of good guidance. Thank you. Have a good night.
My pleasure. Have a good night, everyone.
So picking back up, uh, Mr. Mason, do you like to, or do you want me to repeat the question there?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the one to two inch, uh, percent interest rate. And then if it's okay with the committee, I'll actually going to share, uh, my screen so he has, uh, so we can discuss kind of the future interest rate. The primary one is when we've done, uh, non taxable bonds recently, they have been, uh, sub 2% by some pretty strong margins. Uh, two weeks ago, we were 1.77% on a 25 year note. And we were on, uh, the previous to that, we were, uh, in the market at 1.35%. So that was during the, um, some of the legislation that changed around municipal bond markets that made them very, very liquid. Uh, but either way, we're seeing the kind of that strong stability between that 1.35, 1.77%. That's, I think, very doable. If I had to guess, we'd be somewhere between 1.75 and 2.5% to go to market. In terms of the long horizon forecasting, uh, so I should see something titled R Studio. This is the math behind it. So, um, can the, can the council see this, uh, this labeled high quality bonds comparison? So, uh, this goes up until about, um, 25 days ago. And this is a very important chart. These are all high quality market bonds. So these are single A, double A and triple rated corporate bonds. And their spot prices tend to trade at, um, about 175, 200 basis points, so 1.75% to, uh, to 2% below what we get. And right now, in the, there's some very interesting phenomenons going on right now, particularly on the right side of this chart. Uh, whenever there's a recession, uh, whenever there's a GDP contract, uh, GDP, GDP contraction, what we see is, um, the lack of, the bond markets become binary. Um, so they really become high and long term bonds. Doesn't matter if it's a one, three or five, doesn't matter if it's a 20 year, um, a 20 year, 30 year bond. Historically, the 10 year note has been pretty independent. Uh, but again, that's not really par for this discussion. I, in short, what, what we see is that after a recession, bond, bond rates tend to compress, relative to each other, and then they tend to expand. That expansion is something that's historically significant and is something that we can track throughout time. That expansion is going to occur, uh, at some point. I can't guess when it's going to occur, but it will occur at some point. A lot of economists who are far more gifted than I, um, believe that will occur when we start seeing full unemployment. So, uh, sorry, full employment to pre-COVID levels. So right now the unemployment rate is like relatively the same, but the labor force participation rate is still 2% or 3% below. So when those about 5.4 million Americans re-enter the workforce, we could expect to see rates take off. And that's because we tend to see inflation occur at full work capacity. There's some very famous models. I'm sure the council learned about, um, throughout the years of Phillips curve is probably the most, um, prominent one that everybody knows. But this expansion, we will see this at some point in the future. I would guess in a couple of quarters, gi- given some more math that has to do with this, the cumulative distribution over time. So I, I do think rates will rise over time. I'm going to just stop sharing my screen. And I think they will rise back to not, maybe not pre-pandemic levels, but definitely something likely for the city paying 3 to 3 and a quarter percent interest rate.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, just, just thinking about this, I, I have some pretty deep concerns with going for a 30 year. One of them, there's other presumptions just for this upcoming week with the budget and the adjustments we need to make. The other, which we, we haven't talked about this, um, tonight, but it's the idea that the next generation is going to pick up the tab for this. I mean, every, every single time it's happened in local government, happens to state government and happens at the federal level, which is we just kick the can down the road again. And that's not to say that that is the fault of, of this administration. It's the fault of previous decades of work. You know, from, from the 60s leading on after. And it comes at a certain time where you, you have to pay your bill. And for partially that reason, and looking at the budget discussion, looking at the interest rate, um, and then just the overall realized savings as opposed for, you're paying a, a 30 year as opposed to an equiterm. If we had a 2% rate, uh, that's a difference of 77 million. If we had a two percent rate, that's a difference of seventy seven million dollars. You could take that money and you could put that and invest into two new schools if you got money from the MSBA. That that makes a difference. You know, I know we talked a lot tonight about real dollars, today's dollars, dollars in, you know, twenty, twenty fifty two. But it makes a difference. It really does make a difference what you do with it in the meantime. And I think that it's, it's time for us to to move forward. And I think to Counselor Devana's point earlier in the night, I would be comfortable with with putting in language saying a twenty year or even doing an equiterm bond. The annual payment, or I think a twenty year, you're looking at somewhere between twenty nine and thirty two million dollars annually, which is what we pay right now. What we've heard over the last year is that, you know, for the most part, we're going to be level funding things. Well, this is one of these things that I think we could level fund moving forward. So not really a question, just those are my thoughts for right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. I think Counselor Kane had, I don't know if he still has a question. Counselor Kane, you had your hand up a little while ago.
No, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're good. Okay, Counsel Mahoney?
Just quickly, so Eric, when you were mentioning the bonds that you said you recently did it and it came in at, I think you said one three three, one point five, no, I may have the numbers wrong. You just said you were referencing one point seven five to two point five oh, that you recently did some bonds. Is that what you were saying?
Yes, recently they were one point seven seven.
Okay, were those, were those tax free bonds?
They were non taxable ones.
They were non taxable bonds. So wouldn't the pension obligation bond, because it's a taxable one, wouldn't that come in at a higher coupon rate? I mean, I'm just, are they the same? Do they, do they get treated?
It would stay the same, Counselor. The marker rate may change. I would expect it to be, you know, it could be twenty five basis points higher, it could be forty basis points higher. It could be the same. We've actually seen, Cinder may have spoken about this earlier, so I apologize and repeat myself. We're seeing, or repeating the point, we see some non tax, we see some taxable bonds coming in the same as taxable, as non taxable.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure, because I, I just remember the conversation too. But I also remember there's that you couldn't predict what it was going to come in at, and you're predicting two, two to, two to three. And now you're thinking it might be lower. But can I just go back to one other question that I had in regards to the Stone report? And I couldn't put my fingers on it before, but I did, I was looking. So we have the new report, which is bringing us to the four forty five. And and it doesn't break out, in the old report on page twenty four that was provided to us in the last presentation, it broke out the City of Quincy's obligation, the City College, Quincy College's obligation. Basically, and then, then it also had the Quincy Housing Authority. And when you added those things and it came at four hundred nine, it broke it out. And so you could see that Quincy Colleges was, you know, twenty one million dollars. And I'm not sure what this, the data on this was. And then the, the Quincy Housing Authority was about fifteen million dollars. We don't have that breakout in the new Stone report. So that four hundred and forty five, Eric, could you again clarify? Does that have, the four hundred and forty five, does that include Quincy College and Quincy Housing? I thought you said it did not include Quincy Housing, but I don't see the breakout in this report. And I'm not going to feel comfortable unless I know the breakout of Quincy College and the Quincy Housing Authority. And I'm not sure why Stone would give you a report one time with those breakouts and the second time without those breakouts, because it's not transparent.
What page are you referencing, Counselor?
The, the previous package that you sent to me on page twenty four on the back, it says, it basically has the, it basically is broken out in the, in the, I think on page twenty two for Quincy College as well. But it says employer, City of Quincy, Quincy College, and then it has Quincy Housing Authority.
And you're asking why they differently phrase between the two reports?
Well, I'm saying that in the, in the report that came in the package that I received today by email on Friday, it does not have, it does not have that same breakout, and the number went from four hundred nine to four hundred forty five. So when I'm looking at this breakout, it does not, I don't see Quincy, I don't see it broken up. Unless you can point to me where it's broken up, show me where Quincy Colleges and Quincy Housing Authorities is there then. And I'm going to assume that if we're going to be, I'm not, I don't want to assume anything, actually, Mr. Mason. So in the, in the first package, the last meeting when we had the pension, the very first, this is only our second meeting, it was four hundred nine and it broke out Quincy College and Quincy, Quincy Housing Authority. In the new package that we just received from Stone, January first, twenty twenty, that brings us up to seven, it does not have any of those breakouts. It says four forty five. In our conversations, and I think Counsel Liang was trying to get that broken out, that four hundred and seventy five million dollars, what is, what does that include? If it includes Quincy College and Quincy Housing Authority, I'm, I would think that they're going to be making those payments to that bond for us. If we're going to bond it out over thirty years, we should be getting those payments from them. So then our, you know, that should not be part of, I mean, I, I just, I just need to understand that. How are you breaking those things out? Because there's money that's supposed to be coming in from Quincy College and Quincy Housing Authority. And I believe it's all kind of lumped into this four hundred forty five in the Stone report and the four hundred and seventy five that you're presenting to us tonight.
So the four hundred and seventy five, as I explained to Council President Liang, is the, that's just the upper cap, the highest that we think could be reasonably assumed.
No, I understand that.
Change in actuary.
Yeah.
A format change within the report, I would defer the retirement board, since it's the report issued, I don't know why it wasn't broken out separately. So defer to the agency that received it.
Again, if anybody's willing to say yes to this, this package tonight, I would say that you're saying yes to something. You don't know what the number is and that you don't know what the breakup of Quincy College or the Quincy Housing Authority. And if they are included in it, I would want to know, but I can't tell because you, you can't tell me. And I, I just find that to be really disturbing that I'm looking at two different things that have changed dramatically. And it looks like we're including in your four hundred and seventy five, because again, in the last one, it was four hundred nine. You are including additional things, but even in the four forty five, it includes something. I don't know if it's Quincy College or if it's Quincy Housing, but it could include both. I have no idea. It's just not broken out. So.
The city is going, the, the offer is the city is going to bond everything besides the housing authority, because the housing authority are not city employees.
Okay, but it's not broken out, Mr. Mason. So as much as you tell me that, when I'm looking at all these reports, I don't see that. So I would want to see, you know, even Quincy College should be broken out, even though you're suggesting they're a department of the city. They have been funding their pension obligation forever, and now we're going to be bonding it. I want to know what the breakout for Quincy Colleges, so we can, we can understand that. So I, I just, I find the whole, you know, this, this is the second meeting we're having with this. And I'm feeling less comfortable with the stuff I'm looking at. And and the knowledge that we have, you know, that the Quincy Retirement Board signed a contract in February for seven years to an investment organization that this administration is pointing at to the Quincy, Quincy Retirement Board, saying they're not doing a good job. That means the administration is not actually working with the Quincy Retirement Board to try to solve the problem, the big problem, which is, you know, to make sure that we're not going to end up with a second unfunded, second unfunded liability. Should we, should we do the four hundred and seventy five million dollars? It's a bigger picture. So the whole thing is making me take a big breath to take a step back and say, we're still not there. And I understand that you created, this administration created a budget with four hundred and seventy five, assumed that we're going to pass tonight. But I just really am finding it incredibly difficult to get to that point when there's more questions, not less questions. And they're pressured to say that, well, if we don't do it now, we're going to, we're going to miss our opportunity. When we do, if this does pass, Mr. Mason, it's six months from now, potentially, before you're actually going to lock the bond. And is that correct?
That is.
Or is it tomorrow?
It would be as soon as we are able to negotiate the sale of the bonds, which would probably be sometime if it passes today in July.
So you don't have to get the approval for the thirty year bond from the state? After what Mr. Walker said, this has to get approved. You're going to say it's going to be approved by July? Is that what you're telling me?
I could, I could see that. I would defer to Mr. Walker in terms of if he has a timeline on that.
I mean, I, I don't think July is out of the realm of possibility. August, September as well.
Okay, so what does it do to your bonds? You don't know because you, you don't have a crystal ball. So you're just saying we have to do this immediately. And, you know, and things could change by September. I'm just, I just think there's a lot of gaping holes in, in the fact that one report doesn't match another report. Numbers don't match up to numbers that I can't tell, I can't, I can't. You're making assumptions that we're going to be, we're bonding Quincy College, but we don't break that out. So it's going to be, it, it's just, there's, there's a lot of unknowns in this. And I understand the risk and I also understand the need. But, you know, I also don't think we should be going out thirty years. So I actually totally agree with Counsel Devona and Counsel Liang on that, and Counsel Andronico, I believe. Because the savings to the city taxpayers, if we did it in a shorter term period, we could level set the payments on the, on our budget so that we're not going up three or four percent every year and be able to have a, we've been doing it for the last, since I've been on the city council. We've been doing, we've been, the last three years, we've had that there. So this year is the year that we're going to do the pension obligation bond. And, you know, it was discussed in the, in the press and every place else, not at the city council. And then it comes to the city council, we have two meetings and, and, you know, and we do have a council that has made a motion to approve. And it's just very risky. I just, I'm very uncomfortable with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahoney. Counsel Devana, and then Counsel Andronico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I came in with an open mind tonight. I was either going to go in two ways. I was either going to cut from the four seventy five million and thought that was a little bit too much to ask and and, and pay off, you know, the next couple of years. Like, I know it's not the full pension liability. Or I was going to try to cut it down from a thirty year to a twenty year bond. And I think to the notion of what I heard tonight, I think the biggest thing for me was this pension obligation is to twenty thirty seven, and it's sixteen years away. So if we push it out to thirty years, you're basically essentially saying fourteen more years of bonding down the road for the next group of counselors, the next mayor, the next constituents of the city. Who knows how long that will be? It might, it, it might outlive, the bond might outlive some of the folks up here tonight. I think it's our obligation as, as, as a, as a city council is to be, if, if we bonded it for twenty years, it'll get us to twenty forty one or twenty forty, twenty forty two. So basically, it'd be like four to five years over the obligation to twenty thirty seven. With that, with that said, you know what? I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to put in the language for a twenty year bond. And anybody, before I make this motion, if anybody that was looking to not vote on this, maybe you can get twenty years. And the folks that were fully on the four seventy five, you might not get it passed tonight. Because I may go the other way if this doesn't succeed on the votes. Because I think we have an obligation to the taxpayers of the city. I feel a little bit more comfortable with doing it under a shorter term, with more oversight and less, less room for error. So with that, I'd like to put in the form of a motion, a twenty year bond.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
And an amendment.
Point of order as well.
Amendment, I'm sorry.
An amendment, right?
Point of order.
Amendment to the motion, I'm sorry.
Okay. Go ahead.
This is the, this is the third motion in a row that none of which have been acted on since the first, which was a motion to approve.
No, we, we, we got a lot of amendments, you're right, Counsel.
I may, I may make a point of order. Someone can amend. Someone can, you cannot amend an amendment. You would have to, you would have to vote on the First Amendment. It's not proper to have it. However, I will accept that into my language for my amendment. If we add after the words therefore, for a period no longer than twenty years.
Right, on top of the prim as the investment source.
Correct, so it's one, one amendment.
Right.
With both those features.
Right, right. And Mr. Barner, I might be around in twenty years, maybe if we, we do this, you know? I think you were directing that at me and Mr. Harris.
Not at all, not at all. Oh, just.
Ninety.
Five pack, packing caps.
Chairman, there's been a lot being thrown at Counsel Harris, you know.
Are we all in agreement? Counsel Palmucci, do you still, do you have your hand up? Did you want to add?
No, not related to this. I had, I just wanted to ask a question, but I'll wait my turn.
Well, so as we spun around here a little bit, we would have a appropriation of four seventy, four hundred and seventy five million to fund all or a portion of the unfunded pension with prim as the investment source, not to exceed a twenty year bond note. Is that appropriate to everybody? Comments?
If, if we could, Counsel, Chairman McCarthy, why don't we put the amended motion, which is Counsel Palmucci's language and my language first? See if that passes and then go with the four seventy five. Is, is that, I think that would be better to go that route.
Or vote, or vote as amended on the four seventy five approval.
We're going to vote as amended with the twenty year and with the prim as the investment source plugged in to the motion.
So it'll be an overall vote?
Yeah, so with, with that, I, I know that it goes back to.
Amendment, by the way, is that a friendly amendment? Isn't that something?
It always is a friendly amendment with this council, very friendly. So I would like, I know that Counsel Harris started it with his motion. And, and, you know, except both Counsel Devana, Counsel Palmucci, with the added prim as the investment source and not to exceed twenty years. And with that, I'd like to take a vote, if we could, a roll call vote, Jen.
Counsel Andronico?
Yes.
Counsel Kane?
No.
Counsel Devona?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Liang?
No.
Counsel Mahoney?
No.
Counsel Palmucci?
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy?
Yes.
So five to three, it's a positive recommendation out of the subcommittee.
Measure fails.
It fails. It means two thirds, I believe.
Not in committee, it doesn't.
Not in committee, okay.
It has to go to council to get six, right?
Yeah.
So it, it moves. Correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. All right. With that, I will move to our next, next item.
Can I just ask one question on the bond?
Real quick, Mrs. Mahoney.
Okay, real quick, so thank you. It would be Counsel Mahoney, but that's okay.
Counsel Raj Mahoney.
Real quick. If we go on the twenty first and we have the same outcome, but it does fail at that point, we are in the same boat with the city budget that we were in the last time. Because we're going to start negotiations on a city budget based on the approval of four hundred and seventy five. Can somebody explain that to me?
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to defer to Mr. Walker for a couple of comments, because, you know, I know that I had sat in a few meetings with Mr. Mason and going over the ten, the twenty year, the thirty year. It seemed to me that there would be adjustments made for Wednesday and Thursday night in regards to the twenty year and the thirty year. I think a, a, a no vote or a non move out of the, out of the committee would have, would have then brought us back to the beginning again. But I think we can have our Wednesday and Thursday, I'll defer to Mr. Walker and then we'll go from there on Monday night. Mr. Walker, if.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think we would probably request that the body's indulgence for about twelve to fourteen hours to figure out what the, the, the best next steps are. If, if you would do me the, the courtesy of giving this twenty four hours to figure out, fourteen to twenty four hours on what.
No, and I, we had spoken with President Liang last week and, you know, we, we kind of planned if we had to extend, we could extend. But that, that's fine with me. I think it's fine with, with everyone else, just so we get it, we get it correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, my, mine is saying is that the budget is in, if the mayor didn't want to change anything in the budget, it'd be incumbent upon the council to find a couple million dollars worth of cuts in that budget. Right, so I've been looking through the budget, everyone else should too, and think of the couple of million dollars that you're going to cut in programming and staff before that meeting.
Yes, sir. I agree. Okay.
Wait, just to reiterate, you're, you're suggesting that this budget as presented, we are going to review knowing that there's a gap of thirty million dollars in there that the city council will have to take, even though the mayor presented the budget, thinking that this four seventy five would be passed.
That's correct, and that's why I'm giving Mr. Walker a little time to, to relook.
I don't know at this point in time. Look, we would certainly consider making some adjustments to tighten the gap, but.
Because we'd have to make that thirty million dollar payment anyway, so we would go in whatever the amount is. So that should be in there, so the budget would actually be higher than it, than it is.
I would say.
It is not an accurate representation still.
I would say within the next 24 hours, we'd have a firm determination on that, but it could very well be the case that we leave that the only thing that changes, Counselor, is the unfunded pension liability and the associated accounts, uh, that relate to this order. We may not, uh, cut anything from the mayor's proposed budget, cause as we talked about in the beginning, uh, this was a budget that was built upon, uh, a restoration of where we were last year. So there's not a lot.
No, Mr. Walker, that's fine. No, I, I get it. I think the point is, is that, so the budget, Eric, right now, is that what number?
Don't have the, the exact number from the council. I can get it for you in one second.
Roughly 236, Mr. Counselor.
Two, three thirty-six? All right, so that's, that's 366 that we're looking at assessing.
As an overall, as an overall, that, as an overall budget, when the council votes on the budget, yes, Counselor. If the mayor determines between now and Wednesday evening that the department budgets are not going to be proactively changed by the administration, then I think it would make sense for the body to go forward on Wednesday and Thursday night, because that is going to be the proposal in the end.
So that's fine. I just, I just had, I just had a suggestion from one of my colleagues that we should go look at the budget and figure out what we'd like to cut. So I wanna know how much this budget is going to be, so I can accurately make those decisions or suggestions as, as so suggested. So if we're looking at a $366 million budget, that's the base mark, that's the benchmark that we're starting with. Unless you decide to make changes, which, great. Just wanna know where we stand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Kane. Okay, with that, we're gonna go on to the next appropriation. 2021-052, $9 million, uh, for purchase of the Adams Academy, 8 Adams Street, 24 Adams Street and 26 Adams Street for historic preservation purposes. And I'll go right to, uh, Mr. Walker. On mute, Mr. Walker.
That's good, cause I think I said something wrong. Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is, as you all know, CPC Committee Recommendation for the Purchase of Three Properties on Adams Street for Historic Preservation Purposes. One would be the Adams Academy, which we all know is the site of the birthplace of John Hancock, and it's, uh, also the Adams School, uh, as donated by the Adams family and currently the home of the Quincy Historic Society. Uh, one of the city's most important historical landmarks, uh, and two adjacent properties, uh, in an effort to protect the corridor from development and then protect in turn, the overall historical integrity of the academy and the future of the academy. The recommendation from the CPC for stalls, uh, major housing development that was proposed for the two adjacent properties, uh, totaling upwards of, of 60 units. Mr. Chairman, you and, uh, a number of the other councils raised concerns, uh, about this project at that time. Uh, and the mayor's in agreement that a development this close to the academy and that corridor would, would deter it significantly from the prominence of the academy. Uh, and that prominence is sort of subtle, but very important to the site's overall historic integrity. Uh, the recommendation preserves the future of the Adams Academy and it ties directly to the city and allows for the expansion of its role as it currently plays relative to the city's history. Uh, there is, this recommendation from the CPC stands on its own as a historic preservation project. But as the mayor has talked about with you individually and with the public, that there is a long-term vision for this site that includes the potential home of a new Adams Presidential Library. Uh, what shape form that takes, uh, is a years-long process. Uh, but again, the Community Preservation Committee agrees with the mayor that this is a corridor worth protecting uh, and worth setting the stage for the potential of an Adams Presidential Library, uh, which, the centerpiece of which will be, uh, the Adams Book Collection, which as you all know, uh, the mayor has formally requested, uh, the return of to its rightful home in the city of Quincy from its current caretaker at the Boston Public Library in town. Um, with that, Mr. Chairman, we have on with us tonight, in addition to myself, uh, Solicitor Timmons, uh, and Land Use Counsel James Masterman, for any questions, uh, the body may have.
Thanks, Mr. Walker. Just a quick comment before I recognize Counsel Palmucci. I think it's a great, I, you know, it was a great idea when the mayor, mayor, uh, approached me after I had a couple of go-arounds with, um, folks in One Adams, uh, and other folks who talked about what it would do for an 80-unit, which I think we, I worked with Director of Planning Jim Fatsis and we worked it down a little bit, but then, uh, you know, it was, it was a significant building that would dwarf a beautiful historic site. And, um, we were back to the, you know, what do we do in regards to trying to slow this development down in that area? And the mayor, uh, came forward, um, and we met one morning. Uh, and, um, and I thought it was a great idea for, for, you know, that, that parcel that's in Ward 1 and, and a great idea for, for, uh, Quincy Center going forward, um, to make a move to come up with a presidential library and, um, and do the right thing. So, um, kudos to the administration for, for coming up with that idea. With that, I'll recognize, uh, Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a couple of, uh, brief questions, uh, from the get-go. Mr. Walker, perhaps to you, but why are we using, and I assume we're considering both matters. We can talk about both matters at the same time, but why are we using, uh, the eminent domain process?
I would defer that to preeminent legal counsel, Mr. Timmons and Mr. Masterman.
Well, uh, you, uh, Mr. Chairman, let me address the issue with respect to 24 and 6 Adams Street. We started out with that one and Counselor Palmucci with the fact that the landowner purchased those properties in July of 2018 and April of 2019 for combined $3.7 million. And then with that assembled parcel started the permitting process. They were intent, as you probably know better than I do, developing between 60 and 80 units on that. And so we started a full-blown discussion about how we could acquire that property voluntarily. What happened was that we were really at, at different extremes in terms of valuation. We had the property appraised at $4.5 million two years after they had acquired the property. Uh, the owner said to us that the value of this property for only 60 units is $11,965. We did reach an agreement, however, well within the $9 million appropriation requested here for all three properties to settle that base. And so effectively, we're taking it to clear title. For an agreed-upon compensation, city will also get a allowance.
Okay, and that's for, that's for 24 and 26?
Yes. Compensation is not agreed on 8 Adams, on the Adams Academy, but we're doing the same thing to clear title, to make sure that we acquired the title that's clear in the university.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense. Um, Mr. Walker, do you know what the, the property tax loss would be by taking those properties off the, the tax roll?
I do not off the top of my head, but I can probably quickly find out. If you ask enough of the question, I can go.
That's okay. You can get it to me later. I mean, I just, I'm just curious about the number. Um, and just at the outset, I'll say, you know, I, I think the Presidential Library is a great idea. Um, it's a noble idea, uh, but, but I just think that, um, you know, I, I, I wonder whether or not it's something we need and something we need right now. Now, I'm a, I'm a proponent of, you know, they don't make land anymore, so if you can acquire it at an agreed-upon price, just as I felt with them in the real building, then you get it, whether or not you plan on using it immediately or you have it identified for a future project. So I, I don't know where I stand on this. I, you know, I, I go back and forth on it, but yeah, I, I just wanted to ask those couple of questions at the beginning and listen to, listen to what my colleagues have to say. It always helps me, uh, make a decision. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate, Counselor, that's exactly what we're doing here. Um, there is no plan, uh, as it exists today for the Presidential Library. That's a massive undertaking. It's gonna require most likely foundation money, state money, city money to some degree, uh, federal money, hopefully. But the opportunity presented itself, uh, to protect the corridor, uh, to forestall this housing development right on top of the academy and to protect the academy as well. And that is sort of what's driving, uh, that was driving, that drove the discussion at the CPC. You know, I, in my presentation there, my presentation here, of course, I made mention of the potential of a Presidential Library because it's exciting. Uh, it shows great vision. It, it, it has some tremendous potential, uh, particularly if we get, when, when we get the Adams Library, uh, the books back. But that being said, as I said in my opening, Counselor, uh, this stands alone as a historic preservation project. Just the land acquisition of it. We know that that corridor, uh, that it's ripe for additional development. There are a number of properties there and there are a number of parcels, uh, further along in the corridor that we're very likely to see in the coming years, uh, probably some, some pretty meaty proposals. Uh, and the mayor looked at that and said, we need to act now, uh, to protect these two properties, so we give that breathing room to the academy. So at the very least, uh, it maintains its level of prominence, uh, in that area. And I, and I appreciate the indulgence there. I know you didn't really ask me a question, Counsel, but I.
No, I, I appreciate it. I think the background's good and I, I'm always, whenever it's a ward issue too and development, I'm always pretty deferential to the ward counselor, as I, I would hope, uh, the same would be afforded to me. Um, but, but for me, it really makes a big difference that we're not using eminent domain, um, in a, um, uh, I don't know, confrontational way or in an oppositional way. Um, it, it matters to me greatly that we use eminent domain as a last resort in a situation where we absolutely have to, uh, for the public good. But, so I, I, I am glad to hear that it's at agreed-upon price and that the use of eminent domain is more of a legal maneuver to, um, uh, to clear title than anything else. So, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Palmucci. Uh, let me recognize Counsel, uh, Phelan, then Counsel Mahoney, then Counsel DeBona.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a couple of questions I have, and it's probably more on a legal side. Because I know in the past, there's been some legal issues with the, 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 the Adams Academy. Is part of this to clean up those legal issues and giving us a, a clear title? Mr. Timmons, yes.
I'll take that one if that's agreeable, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Timmons.
Yes, that's precisely what's going on, Counselor. The issue with Adams Academy is that when John Adams conveyed the property where that now stands, he conveyed that lot as part of one conveyance. And then within it, he said, I would like a school built on this site, but the money to build the school was not available. Um, he also conveyed in a separate conveyance, uh, two large pastures of land, he referred to them at the time in his deed. And the plan was that the income from those pastures would accrue in a trust fund. And then once there was adequate money to build the school, uh, the school was to be built. And that's exactly what occurred. So the conveyance of the land itself, the lot itself, was to the town of Quincy in, in its, as a municipal corporation and its municipal status. So it was, um, President Adams' clear intention to convey the land itself to the city. Uh, but then the school being built created what now exists today as far as a little bit of confusion. Uh, because the school was built with a separate trust and it was built 40 years later. Um, so there had always been this kind of separation between the title to the land and then the building that sits on the land. And so that's what we're doing and why we're using eminent domain here. Uh, because when the city lost the Woodard School case and was removed as a trustee, um, we had previously controlled both the trust side of things and owned the land. Uh, but once a new trustee was introduced and he had his fiduciary obligations to the Woodard School, um, there's been a tension ever since that has existed between the parties. So what's going to happen is now, um, through use of eminent domain, we'll be able to eliminate that issue. Title to the property will be cleared and, um, it will just be an issue of how the money works out.
Okay, so, so basically we shouldn't be looking at any more problems with this. I know I remember having a vote back when I was on the council 30 years ago. I know recently there was another vote. This will put all that, that to bed.
Well, uh, yes and no, because it's the eminent domain process, so there may be follow-up with it. Um, a party has a right to bring, uh, subsequent action if they don't feel they got enough money. Um, what this will do is we'll start the negotiation with a trustee and we'll see if we can do what Mr. Masterman and Chris Walker and the administration did on the other two properties. I didn't work on that deal at all, but I know that there was a fairly contentious back and forth to get that one resolved and hopefully, um, we'll clear the title question through eminent domain and then we can enter into the negotiation with the trustee.
Okay, so you, so you're, you're confident though that this, you've gotta go through this process to, uh.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, it's back to you. I, you know, congratulations on working hard. I know that how hard you've worked on this issue. Um, I do feel that the Adams Academy is a gem, a critical part of, uh, of our downtown, uh, historical part that, uh, is just priceless. And the, the options are letting it go and continuing to build monstrous buildings all around it. I think this is a corridor that needs to be protected. It's part of our history, not just part of the city history, part of the state history, part of the US history. And if we have a chance to do this, I feel we owe it to the people down the road that we worked, worked to do it. As a ward counselor, I also sit there, realize how some of these, how construction has gone on through the city, and sometimes it's a very delicate issue. And I appreciate the work, Counsel McCarthy, who's had a work on this. And I think as long as we can put this issue to bed and make this part of the city and make it a, a gem, which for every city resident. And I, I think it's an opportunity we should not pass by. So, um, I'm looking forward to hearing the other questions and everything like that, but I will say at this point, I am strongly in support of this. And, um, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Phelan. Uh, Counsel Mahoney?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I was having a problem getting off mute. So I just wanna follow up a little bit with Counsel Phelan just said. And, um, you know, in 2019, um, the new trustee, I think it's James, I don't know how to say his last name, Geron- Geronico, um, filed a motion seeking that the academy, um, maximize. They were, they were trying to sell the academy. I think the city then countersued saying that the, 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 the trust doesn't own it. Is that true? So you went to court with them for that, is that right, Mr. Timmons?
Uh, yes. Uh, we didn't say the trust didn't own it. We said that there's a separation of title. That the city owns the real estate and that the trust is essentially the owner and controller of the building on the real estate.
Okay, so kind of like, um, kind of like a reverter or kind of like the, um, the, um, the veterans, um, at the police station, that type of thing, the building, but we own the land. They, that's the same type of thing, right? Correct? Almost?
Um, not really. I mean, we have clear fee title, which means we're absolute owner of the real estate. The reverter's got some contingencies in it and everything, but I do get your point. It's, it's a, a little real estate wrinkle. We'll call it that, you're right.
So, but then I just wanna make sure. So then, so then a judge denied Quincy the claims, the claim that, that you, that you own the Adams Academy building. So are we just talking about the building and not the land? So does the city of Quincy, oh, I guess, I'm gonna stop for a second. The $9 million, could you break up the $9 million for me? Um, I think you said that 4 million of it was gonna go to buy those two properties. Is that correct? And is there some money going to buy, buy the Adams Academy?
No, I, uh, that's not how the breakdown works.
So tell me how the breakdown works.
Jim Masterman, could you take that one, please? I'm pretty certain that it's, uh, seven, it's, uh, is it 6.7 or seven, uh, six point, yeah, I think 6.7 or 7.7 for your properties and then the balance. for your properties and then the balance, the 2.3 is for Adams Academy?
I'll go through the numbers. Thank you, Mr. Timmons. Through you, Mr. Chairman, Counsel Mahoney. The, uh, the appraisal and what we would have taken the property for had there been no agreement was 4.5.
What, in which, which building were you talking about?
24 and 6, 24 and 6, 24 and 26 Adams, the two properties.
Okay, so that's not the Adams Academy, the two, the two-
It is not the Adams Academy.
Okay.
So the two buildings, I beg your pardon, I stepped on you.
That's okay. I just want to make sure it's clear, okay?
The two buildings, 24 and 26, which the owners assembled in April of 2019, the 3.7, we had it appraised, it was 12 to 18 months later after for 4.5. That would have been pro tanto. But as had, as we have been admonished often by the council, we would like to reach agreements with these owners. And the owners were intent on pursuing development in that area. And they were well through the permitting process. In order for them to give up all challenges and to sign a release of the city for paying an additional 2.2. So the initial pro tanto, 4.5, the settlement of 2.2 per total of 6.7. They're giving up their right of action. They're giving up, uh, risks inherent in the compensation. Uh, they wanted, as I said earlier, 11.95, 965, to reach this agreement.
Okay. I'm well aware, yeah, I was well aware of the, um, process that they were going through. I don't think they had approval for their permitting, but I'm well aware that there was some battles that Counsel McCarthy and I actually participated in.
Yeah, they ended, well, you know the process better than I do, but they, they were the middle of that process. Um, advised the appraiser obtained was that they were, um, it was reasonably probable that they would get a certain number of units on that land. And now here we are two years later, so, um, since they bought it.
Two years later, you're saying, so two years later, you're saying that that four, that 6.7 will still hold, is that correct?
Oh, yeah, but the, the-
Because you already have an agreement with that, right?
Two years after they assembled at the 3.7, we're providing everything for an additional 3, having appraised it for 4 and a half.
And the remainder is, um, 2.3 is what's going to be, um, is the settlement for the, the temple fund, right? That would be the-
Not, not all of it as yet. The actual payment pro tanto is yet to be determined. But we know within that 2.3.
And then it also said that, that, that I believe, um, when I was reading about the CPCs, it also said, um, as well as to pay to settle in court. What does that mean?
That's the 24 and 26. There's no further cause of action that the owners of 24 and 26 will have against the city of Quincy. Pay the 6.7, we get a release.
Okay, so-
With respect to Adams Academy, we have to pay pro tanto.
For the Adams Academy, what does that, say that again, for the Adams Academy, you broke up?
For the Adams Academy of property, we have yet to determine what we recommend to the council as the pro tanto payment. But it will be less than 2.3 million dollars, or it'll be 2.3 or less, but it's going to be less. What that number might be, we haven't, Jim and I, and, uh, Jim Timmons and I, and the appraisers, we have settled on that number to make a recommendation to the council. But that's what we're working with then.
Okay, and, um, and then also did the, so now back to you, Mr. Timmons, if I could. Um, so the city basically went to court, like you said, about who has proper ownership of the land. And I think it was the, um, the Supreme Justice came down and said that the Adams Academy did. Is that correct?
Uh, no. Um, what happened is when, uh, the trustee Di Giacomo filed this action, he didn't name the city in the case. There's been no final judgment in that case yet. Um-
But did the judge deny all these names?
So he did it because he's always taken the position that the city doesn't own the land. But the fact of the matter is, there's a deed at the registry of deeds and, you know, there's some other factors here that show that the city does own the land. So we have, um, filed an appeal to what's called the full bench. It's a full bench appeal. Uh, and in it, I advised the, uh, court that the single justice who made the initial decision, she didn't have all the information at front of her at the time because when Di Giacomo filed the case, his lawyer, when the lawyers filed the case, they didn't put all the information um, regarding the city's ownership interest, um, into the record with their complaint. So we're still disputing that, but in light of the project that was coming online, it was, it's disregarded that this is the best way because the fact of the matter is the title's split and it's going to continue to be a battle um, in regard to how we deal with the trust. You did identify that, uh, the, the complaint filed by Di Giacomo was to sell the land, um, and the building. And this is just going to be a protracted dispute. So we're looking to settle the title part of it and then we'll resolve the money part as we go.
Um, could you, so, so, so in this particular case, that's my daughter calling me. Um, could you, um, backtrack for one second? Because you said that you, um, you appealed this and it hasn't there? So I called, I actually called to check on this and it sounds like there's no decision that's been made in regards to the appeal. So the city's appealing, um, the ruling that the judge denies Quincy claim to the Adams Academy building downtown, which you're saying now, there were two different things, that it wasn't just the building, it was also the, um, it was, it's, you're separating and now saying that you actually own the land, not the building, correct? So the original, the original claim was that we own, we own the, I believe it was the Adams Academy. I just want to understand that once again, so before-
No.
Are we just saying you only own the land and the Adams Academy own the building? Um, it, it, because this is, this is, I think, what Counsel Phelan was trying to say. Like, there's a lot of intertwining tangles of legal things. We're waiting and you are, you are, you've got an appeal into the Supreme Ju, the Supreme Justice Court to say that the city, that the city, the city's appealing it. Why would we not wait? Because this is something that they said because of COVID that they haven't come down, but they could come down any day now. This is when I called in Friday, this is what they told me. I went through this whole long process because I didn't have any numbers. I had to talk through a million people. But quite honestly, what's being told to me is that this decision hasn't been made. It could be happening at any second. And when it does happen, we could, we could potentially be the owners of this and then we would be, so we're rushing to do this right this second. And we haven't even approved the CPA monies. I have a whole question about CPA monies. So I'm just wondering, why would we go through this exercise and spend money on something that we haven't made? It hasn't, there hasn't been a decision made that at a, you know, at a, a ruling that the city's taken on themselves to go as high?
Who did you talk to at the SJC?
I actually don't have the person, I don't have that information in front of me. I don't have that name in front of me.
Well, it's a very small office.
Mm-hmm.
Um, was it a man or a woman? I'm curious because you definitely got very bad information. Whoever you talked to, it's unfortunate, you can just call me. Uh, in the future, you can try me first, because-
I want to be too, Mr. Timmons, as you know, everybody has bad information except for the city of Quincy. I understand that. I'm so sorry. But I did talk, I mean, I, I'm simply saying that there was, I was just trying to follow up on something.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, first of all-
Yes, Mr., yes, Mr. Timmons.
Thank you. I do not want to have disrespectful comments like that directed my way, number one, number one. That's totally out of order for a member of the city council to treat someone from the executive branch in that manner, okay? Uh, that's number one. Number two, it is absolutely the case that I can tell you the names of the people, all right, who work in that office. There's four people who work in that office and I know them all. Number three, if you check the docket, the docket will tell you that the case has not even been assigned out yet. So it's not going to be decided any day. The briefs are all submitted, but they're sitting now and they're waiting to be assigned. So this case is sitting there waiting to go. And the fact of the matter is, it's not going to resolve anything because all it is, is it's whether the city can intervene at the SJC in, uh, trustee Di Giacomo's attempt to sell the property. And we still have remedies in the land court. We can file suits in court about a title to quiet title. And what we decided to do was to just take a proper, simple, direct course and by virtue of the eminent domain process, we'll, we'll quiet the title. That's what Counsel Palmucci asked and that's all we're doing. I'm not saying we have right answers, wrong answers. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not at the SJC and still speaking or trying to speak. All right, and explain to everybody here that this is prudent and it's going to end the conflict over the title that has long existed because the conveyance occurred in the 1820s when, uh, the whole land use game was very, very different.
Thanks, Mr. Timmons.
Thank you.
No, I know, I, I, I get it. Ms. Mahoney, you have any questions or Mr. Timmons?
I do still have questions. Thank you, thank you, Counsel, Counsel.
Counsel Mahoney?
I'm, I was going to say Chairman McCarthy, so thank you very much. I do still have questions and I'm sorry that you find that it's rude that I, that I talk to somebody. But the point, the point I'm making is that, you know, in, in January, um, this is published in, in January 8th of 2021, Judge denies Quincy claims to Adams Academy building downtown. Now, we filed, we filed an appeal and the appeal hasn't come back. Now we're here for $9 million, to which in this, in this, Di Giacomo actually says that the, that they were trying to sell the property for 3.4 million dollars. I'm just questioning that. So, and, and, you know, you can take it for whatever it's worth. I'm just trying to follow some, some of the paper articles. Everything we learn is through the newspaper. It's not through the city council. It's not from what you're presenting to me tonight. We're taking something by eminent domain. And then we, we have CPA monies, which is for historic, from what I understand is for, was, is for historic purposes that we're purchasing the Adams Academy and those two buildings. Is that correct? Is that the CPA findings is that we're buying them for, for historic purposes?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so the $9 million that we're going to fund that we haven't approved for the city council, that we're approving, they're trying to approve tonight, the eminent domain for $9 million is for historic purposes. But then the next thing we have is Quincy takes the first steps towards a potential John Adams Presidential Library. And, you know, you're taking the land by CPAs, basically bankrupting the CPA monies from anybody being able to do anything in the city of Quincy for using the CPA monies for historic or open space or anything else for a presidential library that's going to be used on that land. So we're, we're using CPA monies under the premise that we're doing it to protect this historic environment. But then we're going to take that same land that you buy, which you're not supposed to do with CPA monies, which will be funding for, I don't know how long we'll be funding that, because it's going to be a bond that you're going to take out to buy this land. And then you're going to come back at some point, because you, because I know the city had paid $75,000 for plans for the presidential library that we haven't seen yet, so that's going to probably show up in the newspaper at some point too. And that's going to cost hundreds of millions of dollars to build as well. But then we're going to build it on the land that we spent CPA monies for, that's supposed to be for historic purposes and not for building. It's for preservation, not for actually building on the land that you're acquiring for. So I, I have a, I just think that we're taking a big, large leap with the CPA monies of how we're funding the purchase of these buildings and then suggesting that we're going to use it for different purposes down the road. And I do have, I think that's not the, the, it's not the true nature of what the CPA monies were actually created for. And I do have a problem with that because, you know, there could be other projects. It could be, it could be Sailor's Pond. We just had Butler's Pond in front of us to have that dredge and Sailor's Pond's going to cost millions and millions of dollars to do. We won't be able to do that because we won't have any money left in the CPA to do that. So I, I just, I, I, if we don't have a, you know, the city of Quincy lost in court by, by saying that the first step to, the, the first step of that doubt is that Supreme Justice came down and said, no, the Adam, Adam Academy owns this. And then we took, then we basically said, no, we're not going to take that. We're going to go all the way back up to get this ruling. And now we're going to take CPA monies and bankrupt CPA monies and purchase this land, which is supposed to be for historical purposes. And then, you know, you know, several years down the road, maybe a year or two, whenever, whenever deemed important, we'll come back with another ask for, you know, who knows how much, um, money it's going to cost to build a three-story, I think it's three stories, a three-story building for the presidential library with a, a walkway over the tracks or the Freedom, the Freedom Trail. And sounds all great, but you know, nobody's seeing it. And that's, that's another investment that the city of Quincy's being asked to do. Taking, you know, things off the, off of the rules. I didn't agree with the, the presentation that was there, but I'm not always also agreeing with using $9 million of CPA monies. And, and the last question that I have is eminent domain. So could you define eminent domain for me? And I'm sure Counsel, Counsel Palmucci could do it too, but could you define that for me? And what is the public purpose for this?
Um, I may defer to Jim Masterman because that's why he's here.
The public purpose for this taking is historical preservation.
Historical preservation, okay. So the public purpose that we're saying is for historical preservation of the Adams Academy. So then in a couple of years, the historical preservation will be for the historical presidential library that we're going to get the books back from. That was just, that we're using, we're using CPA monies, um, to acquire this land. And that's what the-
They're not mutually, they're not mutually inconsistent. They're not mutually inconsistent.
They, well, the, the nature of what the CPA monies and how it was, how it was created was not to build things on the land that you acquire.
Ms. Mahoney, let me go to Mr. Walker for a second. Thank you, Mr. Mason. Mr. Walker?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify a few things. Um, under no circumstances will, uh, this recommendation from the CPC bankrupt the CPC monies. Uh, Mr. Mason can elaborate a little, a little bit more if necessary, providing that the amount of revenue, the amount of potential expenditure, expenditures will still remain after, uh, this appropriation quest, request goes through. There will be several hundred thousand dollars every year for different groups, the city, other areas for people to make requests to the CPC. Uh, under no circumstances is this, uh, proposal, um, one that protects incredibly important corridor through the city, which I said was a standalone project on its own. Now that if at some point those two adjacent properties become subject to a new, part of a new presidential library, that also fits within historic preservation. Um, so I just wanted to, to clarify tho, those two things.
What are the assets, what are the assets we're going to put into that library? What are the assets that you're going to put into that library?
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet, Mrs. Mahoney. That's down the road. Let's just concentrate on the $9 million purchase. And, um, I want to move it along. I'd like-
It's important.
Mrs. Mahoney, I want to move it along to Counsel DeBona. We can come back to you, but let's, let's let everybody have a, a couple of words. Counsel DeBona? You're on mute, Noel.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it's, um, so what I wanted to elaborate a little bit on is I'm, I'm the representative from the city council on the community preservation committee. And, um, it's a, it's a nine-person board, very similar to a nine-person city council. There's a lot of different opinions there as well. Um, we have some veterans on there, uh, Tony Ritchie, Maureen, uh, Maris, Connie Driscoll, John Brenahan. And then we have some, some new, newbies, our chairman, Scott Campbell, Larry LeUzo, Ellen O'Donnell and Will Smith. Um, they, Will Smith and Scott Campbell have been on for a few years. Larry LeUzo and Ellen O'Donnell just come on. And myself, and we have this same type of conversation that we're having tonight as we do on the CPC on, on, on bonding, on, um, um, you know, what we get from, from, you know, the state, uh, on reimbursement, how we spend our tax dollars because it's, it's being, uh, tax-funded, funded money. Um, I will say that, um, it was a 7-1 vote on the CPC, CPC CPA funds for this $9 million appropriation. So it's positive recommendation, um, uh, for the historical preservation purposes of this, uh, acquisition, I guess I could say. Um, we deliberated very similarly here, on it for, for a couple, couple of meetings. And, um, we have a positive recommendation come up here to the city council. Uh, I was in the informative, I voted for it. Um, and I know, listening to Counsel Mahoney, she, she puts up some valid points. Um, um, and, and listening to the other counselors, but, uh, you know, at the end of the day, I think we're looking at the end goal, um, the library. And I think that'll be a great addition to the city of Quincy. Um, I like the deliberations here as a city council. I think we have a lot of different opinions. Come from a lot of different stances. Some of them have been on air a little longer, a little more tradition with the city historically. Some of them have been on this, been, um, in government in the city of Quincy a little longer, so we understand a little bit more. So, um, I, I think it's a diverse group and I like to hear from everyone and get a little piece of everyone. But I, I think it's a good, a, 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 a good situation for us, for the city. Um, and, uh, just listening to everybody, I'm, I'm going to defer to them, but I just wanted to give the community preservation's recommendation of a 7-1 vote, um, for it to come up to here. So with that, Counsel McCarthy, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel DeBona. President Liang?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Masterman, can you just clarify? So, and you talked about this a little bit before, um- Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Masterman, can you just clarify? So, and you talked about this a little bit before. Um, I just wanna make absolutely sure that I have a full understanding of this. So as of, and Mr. Timmons, uh, feel free to jump in, too, if I'm not understanding this correctly. So you know, based off of what I have read in the papers and and sort of where we are on things, right? We own the land, but we do not own the building, correct? As a
This is on eight Adams. This is on Adams Academy, right?
The Adams Academy I'm talking about, yeah.
This is a Mr. Timmons issue, Mr. Chairman, if I can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Masterman. Jim?
That's correct.
Okay, so then in this process, and I think this is why I called in you, Mr. Masterman, because earlier I heard you saying um that in the conversations that you have had for twenty-four and twenty-six Adams, that if we were to move forward with this, um, it's the appraised four point five plus the the two point two, which is a total of six point seven million. And that then ends any disagreement, any lawsuits, any, any sort of court dealings with that. And that comes over to us in a clean way, right? The title of those two properties come over to us cleanly?
That is correct.
What about then the Adams Academy property at Eight Adams Street? Does this nine million also go towards the purchase of that? And then that comes over to us in a clean way in the same way as the other two properties?
The title, yes, by taking would now be in the city of Quincy. The difference is that there's no agreement on the Adams Academy as to full compensation.
What do you mean by full compensation?
Uh, they would have the right to seek additional compensation above the payment pro tanto we will make.
All right. And then what, so what does that process look like moving forward for us? If we were to, let's say just logistically, right? Again, I'm just trying to understand logistically how this all works when we forward. If we, you know, if the nine million gets approved, we move forward, we get at least those two properties, the um twenty-four and twenty-six cleanly over to us. And then the remaining amount, I would imagine, goes towards the purchase of ideally a clear title of the Adams Academy and put that to bed and move forward at that point, right? So what happens next then at that point if you said that there's still potentially um a risk of then coming back and asking for more compensation?
Yeah, just one, one correction, Madam President. There, there will be no question about a clear title. The, the city will have clear title to that property. But as a result of the taking, the owner has a right to say that the amount of money that was paid for that property is not enough. And they have a right to sue the city and see the jury to determine full compensation. And that could go on for several years until there's a final determination.
Okay, so what's, but what's the likelihood of that happening? I mean, I imagine that there are, and there might be some things that you can't speak to legally. I understand that, and I'm not trying to get any party, uh, whether I agree with them or not, into trouble here, right? But I would imagine that there are conversations that we are in right now to avoid something like that happening, no?
Any discussions that have gone on between the city and the owner on Eight Adams is gonna handle by your team. What I understand is, given the nature of the litigation that's gone on on that particular property, the likelihood of a settlement is certainly still available, but we are not planning on having an agreement anytime soon on value, on value.
Okay, Jim, can you just speak to that a little bit? I just, I kind of wanna just understand.
Sure.
Hang on with the conversations and again, fully respecting the fact that legally there might be some things I can't be said. I don't, I don't wanna get anybody in trouble here. I just wanna understand where we stand on if we were to move forward with this, because I do wanna protect the property. I do, you know, to some of the earlier points, respect that, you know, I don't wanna see more towers and more residential units going up there. Like, I would love to see more commercial space residential units, not so much. So you know, I appreciate that, you know, we wanna retain what's there. Um, but I just wanna make sure that, again, when we're having this conversation, we understand fully the risk that comes with it as well.
All right. Well, um, in twenty fourteen, the city of Quincy was the trustee in the city of Quincy on the land. And we were removed by the Norfolk Probig Court Judge, and that was sustained on appeal up at the SJC, and there was a new trustee. So since the new trustee, Jim De Giacomo, has been in charge, he has not recognized any interest on the part of the city. He feels that because the city had previously, and this is back when we were both trustee of the academy. Um, see, what I skipped over because this is a long, long saga. But um essentially what happened was the land was conveyed to the city, but then there was also a trust created. And John Adams said, I want the city to be a trustee of this trust and use the money from the past years that I talked about earlier. And once there's enough money, that trust is gonna build the school and operate the school. So the fact that the city was both the trustee for so long and the landowner, um, that created a situation where uh people believe that title was held by the trustee alone. Um, and that is simply not the case. And that's, that's come to a head now. Now, interestingly, in our municipal code, there's talk about this. In the municipal ordinance, chapter eighty-nine, there's a specific provision that says that if the city ever decides to do something with the land, then the city has to pay money to the trust. And that's essentially what we're going to be doing here. Um, the, the issue is, as Jim, as um Jim Masterman alluded to, although he was able to talk to the developer on Adams Street and negotiate a settlement with him, we haven't even started that yet with uh trustee De Giacomo. We, we will start the process and we'll talk to him. But as I said to Counselor Palmucci, he kind of ID'd this. Um, the, the point of what we're doing here is quieting the title. We're gonna establish that the title is just in the name of the city of Quincy, but then we have to pay money to the trustee and the trust because of their interest in ownership over the building. So that's the distinction here. Now, um, as Jim said, Jim Masterman, that is, we offer our initial tender during this process called the pro tanto. Uh, but generally speaking, if people aren't happy, you either negotiate a resolution or there's a, a further judicial process where the value is determined. And so that's where this will head.
Okay, but so what leverage do we get then in purchase and in moving forward with this? Is that we have now the title on all three properties?
Could you say that again?
I'm just trying to clarify what the leverage is if we move forward with this, is that we then now have, if this moves forward, we have then the titles for all three properties, the land and the correct?
Right. We'll own from Dimick Street all the way down to the last lot line on the um, the, the, one of the other properties, whichever one, I believe it's the Funeral Home, which is the uh, I think the unsoldy buildings, the middle property in the Funeral Home is the, the uh property that sets kind of the north bound.
But again, it's, it's uh the land and the buildings. For all
Own everything. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you both for clarifying. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, President Liang. Let me go back to Counselor DeBarna, then Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I thought, I, I actually forgot to i- i- put some input about uh over the last year, year and a half. A developer tried to come into that particular area and tried to put eighty units in there. I know that the neighborhood was not in favor of it with the overdevelopment in that particular area. Um, everybody rebutting that. And being a CPC, community preservation uh member, the biggest thing that we do, and as the city grows, is continuing to make sure that open space, green space, recreation parks, and our historical preservation, as well as affordable housing, is preserved here in the city of Quincy. So um, this is a better move to keep it as historical preservation rather than giving it to the developer to put in some more units. Uh, it was up to eighty. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the nine million dollars for this acquisition, for the purchase of the Adams Academy, Eight Adams Street, Twenty-four Adams Street, and Twenty-six Adams Street for the historical preservation purposes.
Okay, we got a motion by Counselor DeBarna on the motion. Uh, Mrs. Mahoney, up, President. Mrs. Mahoney, go ahead.
Yep, I just had, I just wanna go back to one thing. So again, the, the city of Quincy has a pending, we're a pending appeal. Um, we don't have, we don't have the answer to this. Um, the decision's gonna come down, you know, it, it, you know, you, this is what the city, the, I, the city wanted to do. The city went back and, and there's no decision made by that. The city that the judge denies Quincy the claim to the Adams Academy Building Downtown. And then finally, when you say that you haven't talked to De Giacomo, this all started because um it sounds like the, the, the Temple Trust wanted to, said that the fifty-year lease in the Quincy Historical Society has been a waste of resources and the lawsuit is that, that De Giacomo was hoping. This is all from the newspaper. The Temple School Fund wanted to sell the building for three point four million dollars. I think that's where we got into this argument because the city of Quincy says that they own it. Then they came back and told us that we didn't. And now we're going back saying that, you know, we're, we don't believe one person. We want five people to rule on that. And at some point, doesn't this all have to go back up, back up and the ownership has to be figured out? I, I could think of that, that court because it's in courts for right now. But they came back with a number of three point four million dollars. We're coming up with a number of less than two million dollars that you're gonna, that you're potentially gonna pay them. But my last question is, what's the year that the city leased, the Historical Society, that the city, City Quincy entered into a fifty-year lease when they were in charge of the trust, I believe, to the Quincy, Quincy Historical Society? And again, I'm just trying to understand, when does that lease end? I'm just curious, um, for the Historical Society?
Um, I believe it's twenty twenty-two, but I'm not certain. I can get you that information after.
And then, you know, should this pass tonight? What's gonna happen to, what's the next step for those, those two buildings that you're trying to acquire next to the Adams Academy? Will they, will they stay, will they stay standing? What, what, what will happen? What's the next step for those?
For you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Walker.
To be determined, Counselor. I will wanna take ownership first, uh, make some determinations as to what's next uh in the immediate term. Is it demo? Uh, is it maintaining? Um, those are decisions that get made, will get made after acquisition.
Okay. And is there any possibility that, you know, if you go, if you do by eminent domain, is there any possibility that we could end back up in court with eminent domain in regards to ownership of this property? That we haven't, we haven't got the final decision from um the Supreme Justice? I'm just curious. Is there any other, is there anything else that could hold it up to the eminent domain portion? I guess that might be to Mr. Mast. I don't know who that's to. Mr. Mast, Mr. Timmons?
I can try that one to start. And perhaps, Jim, you can backfill with some information, because I have consulted with Mr. Masterman on some of the eminent domain components. But um, if we were to vote this tonight and proceed, we're gonna render the court proceeding at the SJC moot. There's gonna be nothing left for the court to decide, really. Um, because what will happen is um trustee Masterman is looking to sell the land and will essentially become the buyer. Uh, because we'll take title to the land. There'll be nothing for him to sell. So that will make the SJC case moot. And, and es- essentially what will happen is uh Mr. Masterman will get some of the money that he's looking to get by way of sale earlier than he would have otherwise. And um then the actual number will be My uh, am I allowed to finish answers here? Mr. Chairman, what?
Point of clarification.
Slow cadence, but I'm trying to finish.
Mrs. Mahoney, Mrs. Mahoney, let, let Mr. Timmons just finish, then ask him the question.
Quite a
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I was trying to say, and then I'll be done, is that we will still be looking to determine value, but title will no longer be at issue. So Mr. Masterman, uh, Mr. De Giacomo does not need permission to sell Adams Academy from the SJC. That case will be moved. Thank you, Chairman.
I was trying, you kept saying trustee Masterman through your whole presentation. Mr. Timmons, I was just trying to
I have such a high regard.
I, well, I do, I think you do. I think, my point of clarification is simply that you were talking about Mr. Masterson, and I don't believe it's trustee Masterman. I think it was um De Giacomo that you're, that you're, I, is, I just wanna make sure that that's who you're talking about. Mr. Masterson's not gonna get any money out of this, is he?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Well, you'll get paid your fee. You'll get paid your fee. Yes. So, so, so because in the article, again, I, I have to get, and you say I can get it from every place else, but I get a lot of my information from the Patriot Ledger and other places. It did say that uh Mr. Um, Mr. Jerm, now, now trustee De Giacomo can actually go back and, and basically question the eminent domain. Um, so I, again, I'm just, it's, it's bothersome to me that the city went through this whole lengthy process to say that you owned, that we owned a building or land and a building, and you lost it to the Supreme Justice. And then now you're taking by eminent domain a parcel that the Temple Fund was trying to sell. And you're saying that they have no right to sell it. And you're just gonna go, you're gonna end route this by going through eminent domain. And that's what it feels like. But because you're doing, and then, then you're saying that it's for historical purposes, but then we're gonna build a historical library and eminent domain is for the public good. So I'm trying to understand the public good. I do understand that we could have development on those properties. I understand that. However, the public good is a, is a potential, public good will be taxes to the taxpayers because they're gonna potentially build a Presidential Library that we don't have also ownership of the books, which I believe um might, might end us up in court as well. So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand all pieces of this puzzle. Um, and if it's just to buy, you know, so you're just trying to buy land, if that's what you're trying to tell me, that's, it's just a little uncomfortable because, you know, the city went to, and it was just recently that you went to the, um, you, you, you did a counterfile to say that you wanted to, um, you wanted to have the Supreme, the full bench tell you that who owned that property. So it's just, it's just a lot in its standards. Thank you.
Mr. Timmons?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify a misperception that I just don't know how it has arisen, particularly where you talked to court personnel last week. The city is not part of the case that is up at the SJC now. We didn't file anything and lose. The last time the city and De Giac, and trustee De Giacomo were in court, we received a favorable judgment. The city prevailed in that case. This case, trustee De Giacomo did not name the city as a party. And I said, we're down at the registry of deeds with the deed from John Adams that says we own the land. We should be part of this case. And that's where the problem arose. So we haven't lost a case on title. Um, we haven't participated in a case on title, and this is an easy, clean way to end it all by just taking the eminent domain because trustee De Giacomo is only looking to get money for the trust. That's it. So we're gonna make it simple and make that the, the only issue and stop battling up at the SJC.
Okay, so Judge denies Quincy claims to Adams Academy Building Downtown. Chief Justice, this is in the paper, tells us that that's what happened. And then it says, the city has filed, the city has filed an appeal of Bud's decision to the full bench of the Supreme Judicial Court. And you're telling me that the newspaper has it wrong? Is that what you're telling me? The city didn't know any about?
The newspaper has it absolutely right, but you're just reading one sentence without any context. And while I have terrific respect for Ms. Whitfield, and she's talked to me a few times about this case, I think she could probably explain if we gave her the microphone right now, what that sentence means. Because she does understand it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're feeling the decision to get into the case. So what we're trying to do is just make it easier for everybody
By eminent domain.
The title and end that dispute because that's, that's created a state of flux here.
Yeah, I got it. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Counselor Mahoney. Um, Mr. Timmons, thank you. And I'm gonna recognize, I think, President Liang, you had a quick question before we go to a vote?
No, just a quick one. Um, this might be over to Sue. I just wanted to know how much is in the um community preservation account right now?
That is Sue DeBarna?
Yep. Uh, well, how, how this fund works is there's various components of it. So we have a, a main account, which is our, which is where the revenue comes in. And what I can tell you that as of, as of, you know, the last posting, we've had two million dollars in revenue come in. Um, and in the cash account, in that particular account, there's three million dollars. However, having said that, there are some um open balances, and part of that goes into reserves that has been transferred out. So right now, there's probably, I would say, like I said, there's two million in revenue that we have received to date. Because I don't know, I'm assuming this will be paid out of the historic um preserve account. And that will be a council order that will come before you in the fall.
Okay.
Thanks, Sue.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sue. You can, Mr., either you or Mr. Walker, Jim, could you just clarify then where the remaining amount is coming up? The main account has two million revenue that has came in plus the three million, right? We still need, and we're still short. So where's that remaining?
For you, Mr. Chairman, this is a, this is a bond issue, Counselor. So it's
You would just have the bond.
Have a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Sue. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. So we have a, a motion by Counselor DeBarna, uh, twenty twenty-one zero five two, nine million dollars for the purchase of the Adams Academy, Eight Adams Street, Twenty-four Adams, Twenty-six Adams Street for historic preservation purposes. Jim, we call a roll?
Councilwoman Dranico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
No.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Eight members, positive recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, twenty twenty-one zero five three, uh, the land, the order of taking for the Adams Academy and the adjacent properties we just discussed.
I move approval.
Second motion made by Counselor Harris. Any discussion on the motion?
That was Counselor Palmucci who did that.
Sorry. I, how did I make that mistake? Counselor Palmucci?
There's been a lot of mistakes tonight.
I'm also likely to die in the next fourteen years, so.
I won't be around much longer with these long bonds. Um, on that, I'll, uh, I'll go for, uh, a roll call, Jen?
Councilwoman Dranico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
No.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Eight members of houses.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Uh, with that, that ends the Finance Committee for this evening. I will swing back and be in discussion with Mr. Walker over the next twelve, fourteen hours or so and make sure we don't have any issues for Wednesday and Thursday, which I hope we don't. And we'll go forward with Wednesday and Thursday, um, as planned. So with that, I'll adjourn at eight twenty-two, if that's okay. Thank you, everyone.